Oh, no, you're fine. I just sat down. Off the alarm. There's always a little bit of that. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 19, 2025. It's 9:00 a.m. We're in the John Nett's Community Wing of City Hall. Real quick, yesterday was my wife's birthday. Grace, if you're watching, I just wanted to wish you a happy birthday again. So we'll begin with the, I'm calling the meeting to order. If you would, please silence all devices. Please silence all devices, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and a short moment of silence.
Ms. Cook, could you call to roll?
Mayor Norris, Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Present.
Councilmember Gambaro.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
All members are present.
We've had some problems with audio and video. All new system. Can everyone hear me? Is the mic close enough for me? A bit loud. He was a bit loud. It's on. Can you hear me? Okay, a little bit better. Okay, Ms. Cook. Did I ask you to call to roll? Did you call it? Did I say yes? I'm here. Okay. All right, we'll begin with proclamation for Water Quality Month. See manager, please.
Yes. Would those coming to accept the Water Quality Month proclamation come forward? Whereas clean, safe water is essential to the health and well-being of all people, animals and plants, and whereas the United States Congress enacted the Clean Water Act of 1972 to prevent the discharge of toxic materials into waterways, and the Safe Drinking Water Act of 17, or I'm sorry, of 1974 to safeguard groundwater and public water systems, and whereas the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, recognizes August as National Water Quality Month to encourage communities across the nation to engage in meaningful conversations about protecting and conserving our most precious natural resource, and whereas for decades, the City of Palm Coast has championed water conservation and water quality education through robust public programs, school partnerships, and community events, and whereas the City of Palm Coast Utility Department has earned repeated recognition for excellence, receiving the Best Tasting Drinking Water Award in 2007, 2009, 2011, 2015, 2019, 2020, 2022, and 2024, and whereas ensuring the highest standards of water quality is a shared responsibility of local businesses, schools, government agencies, and every resident to protect the health, prosperity, and future of our community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida that the month of August 2025 be officially designated as Water Quality Month, and encourages all residents to safeguard our water resources and continue supporting the exceptional work of the city's three water treatment plants and two wastewater treatment plants, which together ensure Palm Coast's commitment to clean, safe, and sustainable water for generations to come. Signed this 19th day of August 2025, attest Kaylee Cook, City Clerk and City of Palm Coast, Florida Mayor Michael Norris.
Peter, Peter will come up and get a photo op, and then you can speak for a couple of seconds, okay?
Good morning. On behalf of the entire utility in the city, I'd like to thank you for this proclamation, and maybe I can say just a few things. I think we're all concerned about our water supply. Today's water supplies, yes, are in danger of running dry, and along with the rest of the world, we do face a critical shortage of clean, fresh drinking water. However, what we're doing here in utility and along with our capital projects, engineering, and construction department, we have several projects that we have already started to combat these problems that we talk about from time to time, and I'm quite sure that we're going to be able to continue serving the city with clean, fresh drinking water with our upcoming projects. There's quite a few of them on the list. I think we all know that, and we're going to do the best we can to continue with this service. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have anything to say? Thank you. Okay, thank you, Peter and crew. We're going to move on to public participation. Please read the rules that are outlined in the agenda. No defamatory comments. You have three minutes. We'll have a 30-minute session for this, and if the item is on the agenda, refrain from referring to that in the opening public comments. So, yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
Good morning. My name is Chantel Pruninger, and I want to come back one more time to the Darnell Center water issue because I heard that the water would be recycled, and I looked into it, and here's what I saw. Darnell Centers often reuse water by circulating the same water multiple times through their cooling systems. Google reports that this method can save up to 50% of water compared to traditional ones through cooling systems. So I encourage you to look into it deeper so that we have enough water in the city because it might be recycled water, but if the water evaporates, if the water is not able to be reused, we are in a pit. So please don't settle the issue until you have thoroughly investigated it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Jeanne Duarte, the fleet budget needs to be investigated. We don't pay for you to keep fleet as fresh as possible, and auctioning off perfectly good vehicles to staff or council raises concerns. Once again, cellphone towers, 5G cellphone towers, don't need to be next to fire departments and residents, and selling our golf courses and our libraries while you approve staff wages draws concern. Mayor and attorney need to stop cutting off residents who come up here and speak, which violates our First Amendment rights. To continue to do so triggers many ethics and bar reports that are already ready to be filed. I did get a good laugh at a local media stating that I accuse the city of planning a sewer infrastructure that will turn residents into cannibals. Fact is, I did not say that, and to continue their attack to defame me or any other resident who come up here and speak out will prompt further action. Fact is, they are planning to connect wastewater, ore, and ore, and mixed, brackish, it is wastewater and brackish mix, to our drinking water system, which is unnecessary as the supply of water is not the problem. I did have a four-and-a-half-hour tour. I did see a lot, and I heard a lot. I'm not talking just to talk. Though to speak scarcity where there is none is wrong. Our problem is with the wastewater. That is our issue. They are already selling our solid waste as fertilizer and using the water for local farm irrigation. Once again, I used to work in an alfalfa field that used wastewater irrigation, and we could not sell those crops to even feed cows. They had to be for horse use only. However, I am impressed with their filter technology, but just because they can, just because they could, does not mean they should. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, Mr. Stone.
How we doing? The city of Edgewater, and soon to Farrow, there's going to be other cities have files for moratorium to stop the building in this city. When Mayor Norris tried to do this, no one agreed. We have major problems with lighting systems. Since Ray Stevens got sick, no one is really picking up the weight on that. The traffic of roads are terrible and terrible condition, and we have a massive water problem. People are starting to say they smell chlorine coming out of the sink, and nothing is being corrected. Nothing is being corrected. And personally, I'd like to know whatever happened to the tape on the meeting on July 16th, 15th, it was edited, and I think that could be a sunshine law violation, and that's when Vice Mayor Teresa, as told by about 10 people, went absolutely crazy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Michael Feldbauer. I've been a Flagler Palm Coast resident for just under 20 years at this point. Currently, I'm a member of the Flagler County Drug Court Team that helps people in recovery and president of the Flagler County Drug Court Foundation, which is dedicated to help people in recovery. August is International Overdose Month. It's a very important thing for people in Flagler County, and particularly in Palm Coast, to understand what's going on with substance abuse in our local area. I might be known as the county antagonist when it comes to this because an antagonist that sees something wrong and can do something about it no one else is, you've got to do it. So my mouth sometimes will get me to the point where people will disagree, but over the last six to eight years, Flagler County's been between the second and 10th highest overdose county in the state of Florida based on population, and one point, we were the highest overdose death county. So something that's very serious. We've seen some downward trends, which are happy, and then lately, we've seen some upward trends, which are scary again. What I'm here to do today is an invitation to this council and to the community at large that on August 31st, which is International Overdose Awareness Day, we are having an event. It's called Walk Over the Bridge. We're starting at Wasworth Park. We go over the bridge to Veterans Park in Flagler Beach, and we have people there that have lost family. We have people there that are celebrating their recovery, and it's a very important day to acknowledge what's going on in our community. It's one thing, and here's where I get my mouth in trouble, okay, to celebrate how nice our median divides are in the highway and our roads, but it's another thing not to acknowledge and to do what we can to help on the other side. Flagler County, Palm Coast particularly, is a great place to live. When we talk about overdoses, people think it's where it isn't, or doesn't, the majority isn't. It's not out in the hood. It's not out in the western part of the county. The majority of overdoses take place right here in Palm Coast. That's where the money is. It can't be denied. The facts are there. So please, I really would love to see the members of this council show that they care by attending the August 31st Walk Over the Bridge. We meet at Wasworth Park at 5:30. We start shortly after that. We end up at Veterans Park for conversations. You will hear stories, both positive and negative, on what's been going on in our county. So I look forward to seeing your faces here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Carly Tajmere. I'm one of the owners of East Coast Animal Hospital. We have seen a drastic rise of lost pets, and pets that get away from their owners, especially most of the time during holiday seasons when many clinics like myself are closed. So what we're trying to do at our new facility off of Palm Coast Parkway, an old Kings, we should be open hopefully in November, we're going to put a scanning station outside of our, in our parking lot. For people that find a lost pet, they can come in, scan it. It'll be outside of our hospital, so we don't even have to be open. You don't have to contact a vet or many local rescues to come and meet them somewhere. They can go to the scanning station, scan the pet, and we'll have different QR codes that connect to links that will help them if the pet is microchipped. They will be able to scan the QR code, put it in the AHA database, and pull up the chip information and contact the pet owner directly. If the pet's not microchipped, we'll have links to the Lost and Found Pet page, a couple rescues that may be able to help and offer assistance. We are working with the county as well to have one located on 100, somewhere along 100, to cover both sides of the city and the county. So we just wanted to throw it out there to you guys, and whatever help and support you guys can offer, we'd greatly appreciate it, getting the word out there, just so we can better help support the clients in our community. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kershaw, could you get her contact info, and if we could track their progress and post it up on the city website, Facebook, all that? Ms. Kershaw, raise your hand, which she will know who you are. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Carroll.
Carol Stotin, Palm Coast, Florida. Bruce Stone is correct. The transcripts have been tampered with, especially the one on the 15th of July, with all the screaming and carrying on that went on. However, at a recent council meeting, many of you were here, many of you at home heard it. Teresa Pontieri said what Mrs. Stotin had to say was everything she said was a flat-out lie. I resent that. I don't come up here and lie. I come up here and ask questions. I am not a liar, never was as a nurse, never was as a mother, never was as a secretary, and never was coming at any council meeting from Edgewater to here. I have not ever been asked to resign from the Sheriff's Department, nor have I had DUIs, nor have I been a person that was incorrigible as a child, and I resent and demand an apology, and if I don't, I feel that she was out of line. She said it at the last part of the meeting where I could not come forward and defend myself. Ms. Pontieri, I am not a liar. I am an 87-year-old woman that has had a nursing license since up until two years ago. You should watch what you say because I am going to come after you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to interject in here. Please remind the audience, do not threaten any, any member on this council simply by saying, "I'm going to come after you," can be considered a threat and can be prosecuted by the local law enforcement.
Okay, Ms. Carroll. Yes, sir.
Mayor, Council, my name is Kirk Whittington. Mayor, I want to give my thanks and my compliments to you for withdrawing the lawsuit against Councilman Gambera. It was a brave decision. It was good for you, it was good for the city. I thank you for that. Councilman Gambera, I understand you're going to be running for the big house, going for the big show, and to go against Randy Fein. You have my support, you have my vote. Thank you for that. One thing Mr. Fein clarified recently, and you may have heard, but he said that the federal government is not going to be helping with the wastewater treatment plant. It's disappointing, but I think that's appropriate. It's really not a federal issue. The federal government abdicates their responsibility through a memorandum of agreement with the state, unless they think the state, and then the state abdicates that to the city. The state has tried. Last week, when I was, last month, when I was going home, I heard your voice on the radio. You were very complimentary of your other council members, seeing how proud you were that all of you went to Tallahassee. I agree with that. I think it was disappointing, they only gave you $5 million, but then to come back and say, "When's the last time anybody gave me $5 million?", it's a good start. I think the state has indicated that they want to try and help. Finding the funding for a quarter of a billion-dollar wastewater treatment plant, though, is going to be a stretch. That's why it's good that we have until 2028 to come up with more funding. But I thank you for what you've done. I understand Mr. Fein has made that position. I agree with his position. It's really not a federal issue, it's a state and a local issue. We'll get there. It's going to take time. But I thank you all for what you do for the city greatly. And I'm sorry, Mr. DiLorenzo has moved on, but I understand from Brittany that we have 121 applicants coming in for the city manager position. That's quite an honor for a city of this size to receive 121 qualified applicants. I hope you all are proud of that fact. You should be. Thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir. Mr. Webb.
Mark Webb, Palm Coast. I would be remiss to not reach out a positive congratulations and appreciation for your efforts at the last Commissioner's meeting in regards to the library. The public here in Palm Coast, I know, has communicated to all of us, and you guys took that mantle, you took that effort, and you took a big step in talking with the commissioners and letting them know, which they already did, that the library here in Palm Coast is one of the most-used facilities in this city, and I applaud you for taking the time to let them know how important it is to us. Now, I know that it's still in the works and budget's still going on, but I just wanted to publicly recognize, and as I say to people constantly, you guys are up there for one reason, and that's to listen to all of us, to pay attention to the concerns, however minor or however major, and it's important when you take that effort, and you inform or you move forward or you communicate a concern of the city, you need to be recognized for that. And I just wanted to take that, my three minutes, to let you know that it's appreciated, and the challenges are abundance, and you guys are daily put in front of you things. The city appreciates it, I appreciate it, and hopefully we'll have that amenity maintained and supported. I was telling somebody the other day when I heard the commissioner go, "Well, we're going to have full support for our library, it's just going to be in two different areas." And I turned to a friend and says, "Wow, I guess I need to go to the McDonald's in Benel to get a Big Mac because it's not going to be offered in Palm Coast anymore." And he laughed and didn't really understand what I was saying. But again, thank you so much for what you guys are doing in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Anyone else for public comment? Let's see, and no one came forward, we'll bring it back to the dice. Do we have any follow-up, city manager?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Ms. Chantel, we recognize your concerns on the data center, and we'd be happy to try and provide you an answer as we're working through the technical details with that applicant. Ms. Duarte, GovDeals is open to anybody. It's a publicly informational site. Anybody could go on there, and we do not know who the highest bidder is until the deal is closed. So just wanted to make sure you had that information. In regards to the city tape from July 15th, that tape was never edited by our team, so we're not sure where that misinformation is coming from, but that is not true. Mr. Michael, about Drug Court, if you could send us an email about the event, we'd be happy to put that on city council's calendar. Thank you, sir. And we'll be happy to work with Ms. Carly from East Coast Animal Hospital. That's a great idea. And Mr. Webb, thank you for the appreciation.
Anyone else on the council?
Yes, sir. Just wanted to address the gentleman that was talking about federal funding potentially for wastewater and utilities. So what I got of that, and I know it was reported slightly differently, that, that kind of the door was shut, what I got out of that was that while the congressman believes it to be a local function to fund these, he said he would try to help in any way he can, and specifically mentioned getting, I believe, $4 to $5 million for the city of Benel recently for their wastewater treatment plant. So money has already been funded from the federal government to a local municipality in a very similar vein, so, you know, not guaranteed, but I think it's worth continuing down that track and advocating for it because there's potential that we can offset some of our capital costs, which are the bonds, which are informing the rate increases that come to, you know, your water bill. So hopefully we can lower some of those increases if we can get some money from somewhere else. Thanks.
Sir, last minute, you have something?
I just want to thank East Coast Animal Hospital and Mr. Feldbauer for bringing to the forefront some issues and concerns and proposed resolutions you all are bringing attention, but also working hard to help us fix known problems in the communities. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on the, on the library, obviously, this board feels strongly that we want to maintain the hours at the library because it is a, it is a very important community support here in the, in Palm Coast. Just to clarify, there won't be a change till December because the new library in, in Benel will not open until then, at which point, right now, according to the decisions they've made, there will be some restrictive restriction on hours, but they did seem to be willing to, to look at that quickly, do, do a quick analysis, but we'll continue to put the pressure on to keep our library here in Palm Coast open on the hours it has been in the past, and we, I don't agree with the idea of having one open. And we, I don't agree with the idea of having one open and not the other one open in normal library hours. So in any event, we're not going to give up on that. That's, we'll continue that, but the restriction on hours really won't begin until December.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Councilman Gambira, you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to Councilman Miller's point on the funding that we received from Benel, that wasn't a Randy Feinism. That was Mike Walz doing his job with Randy Stapelford and getting that funding for our residents. And I, I'm not going to hold my breath that Congressman Fein is going to do anything for us. Secondly, I look forward to visiting with Representative Greco tomorrow, somebody that actually fought and got funding for us and delivered for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just off topic real quick, city manager. Why is that flag there? Why is that U.S. flag there?
I'm not sure, sir. I'm not sure if there was something else in the building.
Okay. Did you have a follow-up, last minute?
Yeah, I just want to state something that I think is really important. As we're getting into campaign season, respectfully, Councilman Gambaro, I think it's very important that we try to keep the campaigning from the diocese at a minimum. And I say that because I think we had a very positive meeting with Congressman Fein, and it's important that we are incorrigible and that we, he didn't have to come and walk the water plant. He chose to. He took the effort to do it. It was really hot. We were all sweating buckets out there. And so I understand that perhaps funding may have come from elsewhere for Benel, but it's really important that we try to work with our representatives for the benefit of the city and that we put the city's concerns and needs as our primary focus, even as we all advocate creatively off of this diocese. So I would just like to bring that to the forefront and make sure that we keep the city's needs as our primary focus when we're up here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else from the council? Okay, we're going to move along. We're moving on to item F, presentations, legislative priorities.
Yes, Mayor, City Council. Ms. Laura Beamer from the Southern Group will be presenting a legislative update. We had to reschedule this item from your workshop last week, and then I will follow Ms. Beamer with our, with your legislative priorities for 2026.
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning, Laura.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. Laura Beamer from the Southern Group. Mayor, happy birthday to your wife once again. I just want to start by thanking you for allowing me the honor of representing you all in Tallahassee. It was a long session. It was a good session, and I want to also thank Councilmember Miller, Pontieri, and Gambaro for coming to Tallahassee and walking the halls with me. It really matters for our members to see you in Tallahassee, so I really appreciate your efforts this session. I'm going to go, I'm not going to go over this, you know, in extreme detail. I'll do a high-level overview because session went long, and we are already here in August. Committee weeks start in October. I believe you're going to adopt your 26 priorities today, which is good because we just found out that appropriation forms are due in November. So we are getting right back at it. Just a little information on some session statistics. There were 1,951 bills that were filed this session. Only 269 of those passed both chambers, and 246 of those were signed into law. And there was a $1.3 billion tax savings for families and businesses in the tax package. Here's just an overview of where the budget lands. As you can see, you know, healthcare kind of takes up the majority of the state budget, but in this 115, $1 billion budget, there was $15.7 billion set aside in reserves. So these are the city of Palm Coast budget items that were funded this year. They all survived the governor's veto pen. You've talked a lot about the wastewater treatment plant. We received 2.5 million for that, as you know, 2.3, roughly 2.4 for the wastewater EQ tank, and then we received 125,000 for the YMCA. Just so you know, these were two of the largest water projects in that budget silo, so we did very well. Just some high-level budget highlights. Every year, you know, we go through the affordable housing. So the ship, the ship funding was at 163.8 million this year. They funded 71.2 million in affordable housing programs. They once again funded the Florida Hometown Hero Housing Programs for first responders. They extended the cybersecurity grant program for local governments. And then, as you can see, the Work Program was funded at 12.98 billion. Last year, as you might remember, the governor vetoed all of the cultural museum grants. He did not do that this year, and they were funded at almost 40 million. Something interesting about the Resilient Florida Grant Program this year is the legislature, instead of putting additional funding into the grant program that was still funded at a lower level, they put $400 million in the water projects. And as you saw, the governor pretty much let almost all of those water projects go. I mean, they were funded. They weren't vetoed. So that, the reason why I say that is because if you remember last year, the governor did veto quite a few of the water projects and told local governments to go to the DEP to get grant funding. And what we found is a lot of the local governments were not able to qualify for those grant funding. So it's actually worked out better in the local government's favor to fund the appropriations versus funding the grant programs. Visit Florida, something that's always debated every year. They funded that at 80 million, and then the Job Growth Grant Fund was funded at 50 million. This was something that actually was, this bill was asked, the city asked me to include this, I think your fire chief did. What this bill did is it expanded and allowed for the Division to adopt rules relating to mental health best practices and to also educate on some chemical hazards and then, you know, the purchasing of gear that does not contain hazardous or toxic substances. You know, PFOS has been a big issue for some of these gear, some of the gear, and they're really taking note of this. I know you all have talked about Senate Bill 180 already. For those of you I've already spoke to, we've talked to the bill sponsor, Senator DeSiglie. He has committed to us that they are going to go back this session, and they are going to tighten up the language as it relates to, you see the second paragraph where it says, "It prohibits local construction and reconstruction moratoriums, as well as more burdensome or restrictive comprehensive plan amendments." They know that that language is very broad, and they have committed that when we go back in October and start meeting in committees, they're going to shore up that language. So we'll definitely be engaged with them as they, as they tweak this bill. The My State Florida Condominium Pilot Program, this was something that was started a year ago. This just expanded the eligibility and kind of shore up the criteria for those. This is, Senate Bill 1730 is another live local tweak. The reason I wanted to include it is because the last paragraph, "The bill includes language which allows local governments to approve affordable housing on any parcel that is contiguous to a religious institution or house of public worship." This was something that has been talked about for several years and finally was put into the bill and passed this session. Local Government Land Regulations by McLean, I wanted to bring this to your attention. And I know this doesn't necessarily affect us here in Palm Coast right now, but it did increase, if you see the second paragraph, "The threshold to approve an extraordinary circumstance or impact fee increase was changed from a two-thirds vote to unanimous vote of a local government body." Local Construction Regulations by Griffiths, I wanted to bring this to your attention because I know there's been a lot of talk about synthetic turf, and this bill requires the DEP to adopt standards for the installation of synthetic turf. So they're currently in the role-making process for that, and this only applies to residential property. And then Plating by Senator Engolia, this bill will now allow plots to be approved administratively versus coming to the governing body. The Department of Agriculture and Human Services Bill, this was their, this was the department's bill. I wanted to bring this to your attention specifically because it prohibits use of any fluoride in public water systems. So now that has been prohibited statewide. The Transportation Bill, Senate Bill 462, I wanted to bring this one to your attention for two reasons. One, it just, it specifies the authority of local governments to adopt ordinances as it relates to e-bikes, micro mobility devices, et cetera. And they also put a provision in there that allows for law enforcement to now enforce no wakes on streets. So after the storms, many communities found that there were automobiles that were going through these flooded streets and pushing all the water back into the flooded homes, and so now law enforcement can enforce that. And then Senate Bill 582, that was sponsored by our local folks under Lee and Representative Greco, and it just allows for a code enforcement board or a magistrate to impose fees if there is a demolition of a historic building that was not supposed to be demolished. So this is my favorite slide. This is key legislation that failed. We really saw a strong desire by one chamber to change how the tourist development tax is funded, what it can be used for, et cetera. So there were a number of provisions that would have sunset all TDT, that would have required them to go out to referendum every eight years and change how they, TD revenue can be used, and all of the bills ended up failing at the end of session. Subsidies to government, House Bill 301, this is sovereign immunity. It comes up every year. It will come back next year. The House passed the bill once again. The Senate did not move the bill, so I suspect that we will see it come back next year, and if it doesn't pass next year, the year after, and eventually pass in some way, shape, or form. And then the CRA bill, this was, this was another big fight from, for local governments. There was an effort by the House to just completely eliminate CRAs. And as we know, there are very, there are several CRAs around the state that do very good work. So after several iterations and amendments, this bill, all the bills and all the amendments also failed. And then this bill did pass. It was a comprehensive recycling plan for the state of Florida that would have instructed the DEP to establish a statewide recycling plan, but the governor vetoed the bill. So finally, the tax package. As you know, we are, we are into the sales tax holiday for the entire month of August. The bill also repealed the business rent tax starting October 1. Now we have the sales tax holiday for hunting, fishing, and camping from September through December. And this is what I wanted to bring to your attention. So there was money put in this bill, a million dollars, to study the state's property tax system, and the governor vetoed the funding for that study. So what's next is we are back in session in January. We start committee weeks in October. I suspect, if it hasn't already been noticed, I can't remember if it has or not yet, that our delegation meeting will probably be in October or November. So I know Lauren is going to talk to you next about our 2026 priorities, but it's time to get those, to get those in order and get ready for next session. So with that, I thank you, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Any follow-up from the council?
Yeah, just wanted to thank you so much for all the work that you did this past session. I know it was an extended session, much longer than normal, so appreciate you hanging in there and doing that work for us. In terms of 180, I know, I just wanted to kind of add to that. I recently went to Florida Legal City's annual conference, and that was a very hot topic of conversation amongst other assaults on, you know, local authority. And so they had talked about how their lobbyists had also engaged with different members of both the House and Senate. So I believe the House sponsor for 180 has also committed to changing the language on that bill, so it looks like they're hearing us. However, we do have multiple bills that came through that kind of restrict local government in many different ways in terms of central planning. So we have to continue to fight to ensure that we get to make the decisions and the state isn't deciding the development in Palm Coast and Flagler County. Could you go back a couple slides? I'm trying to, I need to jog my memory here. TDT, just wanted for the residents, this is our tourism revenue, and just wanted to clarify that that's like a bed tax, so it's not something that we generally pay unless we're deciding to go stay at a hotel on the beach or something like that. It's generally something that someone from without the city comes and pays, and then it allows for marketing for tourism as well as beach renourishment and capital projects that bring tourists to the state of Florida and Palm Coast in general. So that's why it's very important that this does not get restricted because it aids in our local ability to fund capital projects, take care of the beaches, things like that. And I think that's all I have for now.
All right, thank you, sir. Last minute, Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I'll go ahead and piggyback to start off of what Councilman Miller was saying. Really want to, as we go into the next session, emphasize the importance of the TDT because we know we're having some grave beach renourishment concerns, how to fund the beach renourishment and the reconstruction. And if you look at other cities and counties, they do it with their TDT funds. And so I understand from meeting with Representative Greco that this year, with our state representatives, they're very focused on resiliency. So if they're focused on resiliency, they surely should not be getting rid of our TDT revenue. So I think that really has to be a big push from all of the municipalities, and I want to thank you for the work that you guys have done. Thank you for being with us in Tallahassee. Please extend our gratitude to your team as well. I know Oscar couldn't be here. He's usually with us, but really appreciative of that and of our freshman representative who really did a bang-up job for us. So we should be very proud. Going into this next session, I had a question about some of the budget, I guess, proportion. So in the presentation that we had, there was a pie chart, yes, that one. Do we know going into next session, should we anticipate somewhat of a similar kind of workup business? Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty standard every year.
When we're looking at the cybersecurity money, so there is a state and local cybersecurity grant program for 11.9 million. Do we know what, I mean, so we know IT and water, you know, protecting our water from cyber attacks, things like that is very important. Do we know if any of these monies are being made available for things like that? Or, okay, you're nodding your head?
Yes. Yeah, it's great funding that we can apply for through the state.
Great. So city manager, just making sure we're really sitting on top of that, please. I also saw some grants for cultural museum program support, historical preservation, obviously, as we look at Fire Station 22 and looking to hopefully find a home for our Palm Coast Historical Society. Let's get with those folks and make sure we're trying to capitalize on those grants as well. And then as we go into this next session, and I know Acting City Manager is going to give a presentation on our priorities moving forward, but do you recommend really focusing on resiliency as some of our representatives have advised so far?
I would, yeah. Resiliency and infrastructure.
Perfect. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just a couple of points on the TDT money. I did notice that last night, the county commission did double the amount of money going to beach renourishment out of the tourist development. Two pennies in, which means it's 40% now rather than 20% of the TDT money coming to the, to the county will now go to beach renourishment, which will help, help along those problems. But there are limits, as we were saying. The big counties like Orange County, it's millions and millions and millions of dollars they bring in. Same thing with Volusia. We just don't have that much, but what we have is very important in how we use that money. And then finally, even after the governor, the state and the governor don't approve a lot of these requests we have, there's still our chances to get some of that money later with the various departments in the state on the grants, as you've been saying. So just because the session ends and the governor, we see which bills are passed and which things the governor vetoes, there's still a reason to keep after things. And I know for a fact that a lot of money still comes, comes back to the cities and counties if you're persistent on that. And so thank you for being here. Good information. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Gambira?
Yeah, nothing more to add than what my fellow councilmembers said, but just thank you for your presentation and thank you for your steadfast work and, you know, working, working with this council to get the funding that we need for our residents. So really appreciate all the work that you and the team have done.
Thank you, sir. Laura, this past legislative session, it was my understanding that overall, it was $550 million that was going to be allocated to infrastructure. Was that correct? Was that their goal in this last legislative session?
The total amount for all infrastructure?
For infrastructure improvements?
I'm not sure what the, what the total amount was. I would imagine it was probably more than that at the end of the day, but I'll get that number to you.
Okay. Because I was under the impression going into that legislative session, that was $550 million. And I'd like the general public to understand, there are 67 counties, if I'm not mistaken, in our, in our state, and there's 400
in our, in our state, and there's 411 municipalities. So we had, what we got, we were lucky to get because that is, it's shrinking.
Member, member sponsored projects, right? Yeah, so we got roughly 10% of the, the state?
If those numbers are correct.
Or 1%, sorry, for one city.
That's why when it comes to us taking care of our city and our county, my philosophy is don't expect anyone to come and save you. That's why we are investing all that money in our, our water infrastructure because you can't depend, budgets are being cut, especially at the federal level. So we have to be very frugal in what we do to protect our infrastructure and do the improvements that our, our community and our residents deserve. I would like, if we could, Lauren, when we get to our set priorities, to see if we can add Fire Station 22 under Cultural Museum and Historical, to see if we can't add that to our priorities, to see if we can't get some money, you know, allocated for that if, if we can. That's just something to consider.
And I will say, so in my presentation, they funded the grant program. However, within that budget silo, there are direct appropriations to entities within the Department of State's budget that we could, we could submit an appropriation request for.
We, we need to try, try to take some of that burden off of us. Anything else?
Just really quickly, Mayor, I forgot. So one of the Senate bills, 462, which mentioned the e-bikes, we as council had talked about, you know, kind of having our hands tied a little bit based on the state statute that doesn't allow us to treat e-bikes differently than regular bikes, but this does allow us to put in some safety regulations. I know staff is coming back in conjunction with legal counsel and general counsel for the sheriff's office in September on some regulations that the sheriff has been working on. I would ask for consensus from the council to give direction to staff and to legal to look at Senate Bill 462 to see what else we can maybe put in place for safety regulations regarding e-bikes.
Absolutely.
No problem.
I was also going to mention that, and I know that some county commissioners are also getting involved in this because I think it's appropriate for us to kind of have, you know, uniform requirements across the city and county.
Yes, sir, thank you. And for the general public, it's, those e-bikes are becoming dangerous. Just in the last two days, I've saw a lot of kids under 16, not wearing helmets, not, not obeying, especially at crossings. That's where you're going to get hit, is at crossing. So all you parents out there, make sure your kids know, know the rules of the road, get off their bike, walk across the street, and wear their helmets. And, and I'm, I would hope that the school resource officers are ensuring that all those kids that are riding the e-bikes to school are, they have their helmets and they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. I think I heard on Jacksonville news this morning, they've already had three kids hit this year on roads up in Jacksonville. One was a fatality. So parents, please, please control your kids on those e-bikes.
Yeah, I agree. I see a lot of just rolling straight through a crossing, especially at turns, which they're supposed to get off and walk. And a lot of drivers are not used to seeing that, especially when it's not a active crosswalk symbol. So you're taking that turn and then there's a bike coming from kind of behind you on the sidewalk, and, and that leads to a lot of these accidents. I also see a lot of adults doing it too, if not just kids, so.
They're quiet, you can't hear them coming, and that accident where that kid was killed in our city with that, that truck, I don't think they killed the kid yield in the crosswalk. That's part, I'm not sure, but I think that's what happened. And you can't see, when you're 12 feet in the air in a, in a truck, you can't see a kid that's, you know, four feet high. So just be careful. I appreciate it. So Lauren, we can move on if you're ready to go. I hope you feel better, Laura.
I do now.
You sound like you're getting, you sound like you're getting over it.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. I took a stab at your local legislative session priorities just based off what we're hearing from Representative Greco and Senator Leake, especially at the chamber breakfast, and then some other things that we're hearing. So I'm going to start with our Northeast Florida Regional Council priority. This is the same priority as last year. This is more policy related, is having enhancements in those grant opportunities for our utility infrastructure funding. Because when you look at all of the funding sources from DEP, Northeast Florida as a whole is not representative. There's the Panhandle, there's a lot of focus down in South Florida, especially with the Everglades, but there's no targeted, specific funding for Northeast Florida. So this is your same priority as last year. Any changes or recommendations to this one? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Yes, sir.
I think this is the only one that was in the package you gave us that was a policy related, not funding. I think we ought to at least, just to support a lot of the other cities and counties around the state, put in something on State Bill 180, Senate Bill 180, and asking that that be changed, and some of the language that restricts what we can do as cities and counties other than emergencies, be included, just to, just to add to the, to the group. I don't know, I, I would think that there's a lot of language out there already around the state and the various cities challenging that, parts of that bill. Maybe we should just kind of add one, add one of those, a policy statement on that.
Is that the consensus of council?
I'm, I'm good with that, yeah.
I keep forgetting to turn my mic on. I know in meeting with Representative Greco and Representative Leake, or Senator Leake, they have voice that they're working on.
I know everybody's saying it's going to happen.
Yeah.
It doesn't hurt to put another.
Sure, I, yeah, I'm all for that, obviously, local role.
Policy, some money. I think you have consensus, Laura.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to your first priority, and these are in ranking order, so feel free to add or modify. And the ranking order is also in your consent agenda when you approve your priorities. So if anything's modified, we will make sure that that's changed after adoption. This is your first priority. It's the, it was the same as last year, did not receive any funding. It is adding capacity to our stormwater system at Fire Station 23 in Burrows Drive. We have a park site there where we could similarly put in a London, like the London Waterway Park, adding capacity to that Bird of Paradise Bel Air Waterway. This is, I had this as their number one priority.
I'm in agreement with that.
Okay.
So I'll advocate for it. This is kind of my area and the back of, and you can see this map, Buttonworth, and then Burbank, where Lauren Ramirez School Board lives, the, this, this lake kind of doesn't have enough capacity. And so what happens is these back of these streets get kind of inundated with water, there's standing water over the top. And while there wasn't any infiltration into a home or anything like that, we just experienced, and you can see those pictures, you can see how much water is back there. So improving the capacity there should help these neighborhoods that are adjacent to Bird of Paradise. I know also on the opposite side, off of Bird of Paradise, those, those kind of cul-de-sacs that back up to Bird of Paradise Lake receive a lot of water, and it gets backed up in there. So, you know, for me, I think that would immediately improve hundreds of homes experienced during storms, you know, especially the hurricanes, the ones where we receive a ton of water. And additionally, in terms of the park as being kind of a static park, there's really nothing on the north side of town in terms of, of parks for children. So I know there's a little bit more area too, which wouldn't be included in this appropriation request, but, and also advocating that at some point in our parks plan, we create a, a park there for children because really it's a six-foot slide at Indian Trails Sports Complex, and then the next closest is Holland Park from Matanzas and the northern Indian Trails B section.
Are we going to have any issues with this one because we tried for it last year?
No, it just wasn't, it was lower ranked on your priority list. So we were really focused on utility infrastructure last year, so that's why it did not receive any funding.
Okay.
Right, the, a bill was never submitted.
Okay. And, and this would be great for up on the north end. So I have no problems with this one. You guys good?
I have a general question in our comment. So I know when speaking to the representatives, they have been very adamant that we need to have some skin in the game for all of our asks. So making sure we have proper funding that we're putting towards the project, whether we're donating land, whatever that looks like. So in your order of ranking here, do we have funding and/or land to put towards these already set aside so that we're not just walking up with our handout, but we've also, we can also show to them that we have skin in the game?
Yes, we'll work on the details of what the match would be prior to submitting those documents to Tallahassee.
Okay, perfect.
This one specifically is city parkland, so it would be, we would be providing the land for this.
Vice Mayor, and I think to your comment and argument, we can easily make is, you know, come down and see our London Waterway project. When you look at it from a strategic perspective of the entire stormwater system, we have a, we do have skin in the game, and we've, we've moved forward with big projects, and we want to do like-type projects for this area, and I think it's, it's important for us.
It's the award-winning London Waterway project.
That's right, award-winning.
Okay.
But it's a good, good question.
Okay, thank you, City Council. I'll move on to the next one, which is I-95 Parallel Facility, Old Kings Road, Phase 2A. We have a current project here under design. This is I-95 with, under, underneath I-95 is Old Kings Road, Town Center Boulevard, Royal Palms. So we're looking at some short-term solution, but we know that we're going to need some serious state and federal help. There's the state trail system that runs through here that needs to be relocated as we expand this. This is resiliency. A lot of the Palm Coast stormwater is coming through this stormwater canal and exiting out of Graham Swamp. So this is your number two priority for your priorities. Any questions?
How much, you may not have it off the top of your head, how much impact fees have gone that have been allocated for that area?
I believe.
Because of all that development that's going on right there.
Sure, so I don't know how much impact fees have been generated from the development in the area, but I do know that the contract for design was about $6 million, and we used several impact fee types to move forward with that project. If you recall, City Council, I believe it came to you early spring, where we were using utility funds, stormwater funds, and transportation impact fees to do the design of this road.
Me personally, I think that's the most troubling interchange in the city right now. All right, thank you.
It's going to get worse.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, like you said, there's, there's more stuff coming online every day in that area, so it will only get worse.
And it's just tricky because you have the, you have that main canal there. It's just hard to work with that.
Yeah, that, that restricts our ability.
Wetlands, there's wetlands over there too.
Okay, I'll move on to the next one, which, this was on the list last year but was never submitted as a bill. It was lower on the priority ranking list, was the Woodlands subdivision stormwater capacity project. We are working with a developer on purchasing and acquiring some land and to add additional stormwater capacity. Many of you know, through Hurricane Milton, we saw the waters rise because all of Palm Coast stormwater is draining that way towards Graham Swamp. And this picture on the screen is the LIDAR of that area, and you can see that it's relatively low. So adding some additional capacity will help this neighborhood. This is number three.
This is more my neighborhood. We're spending a lot of money to redo the culverts under Colbert Lane, and that primarily is the way all of this area, south of Palm Coast Parkway, out to Route 1 and 95 and down to 100, that's how that water gets to the intercoastal waterway. So all of these projects kind of work together to improve that situation, especially in the Woodlands where they do get serious flooding. So I, I really support continuing to do that.
And City Manager, it's a capacity project. What specifically is it? I can't recall.
Uh, we're adding another stormwater pond.
Okay, so it, so it's a, a static pond, okay.
I, I just want to thank you and Carmelo, because I know when we sat down with Mr. Davis probably six or eight weeks ago to talk about possible locations for a stormwater pond, we had to kind of get creative to look at some land that we might be able to purchase from a developer in order to make this happen. So thank you guys for staying diligent and really looking at alternative solutions.
Thank you.
Yeah, to that point and Mr. Sullivan's point, that not just everything east of 95, the P section also, all this water flows into there as well. So, you know, everything south of Palm Coast Parkway and to the west of 95 also flows under 95 and then through this area.
So this is a resiliency project, so it also meets the objective that we're hearing from the state. Moving into your fourth priority, which is again, another stormwater project, and again, it was on the list for last year but did not get funded, Seminole Woods Dry Lake Weir Project. We do have some design money that we could match for this. It was not funded last year, and I'm trying to think if there was anything else related to this project that would be helpful. We're working, if you remember from Hurricane Milton, Seminole Woods Boulevard was shut down one lane because we have a lot of, a lot of water, so this will help add some capacity to the system. Okay, I'll move into your fifth priority, which is partnership with Flagler County on the construction of a new animal shelter. We heard Flagler County Commission possibly submitting this as a legislative priority during your joint session. You mentioned this as a priority as well, so have it on there as number five.
And for this, would we be submitting it jointly as one project within the, the Flagler County book?
I believe that's the intent, because if we're going to get it across the finish line, I think it's going to take both the city and the county working together, whether that's acquisition of land, their land, our land. It's going to take some capital financing, and so we're going to need to work together.
Yeah, agreed. I, I just, you know, in, in terms of our lobbying efforts, it's all going to be one submission essentially with both of us advocating for it, yeah.
Okay, I'll move on to number six, which is saltwater canal dredging. This is new, but I thought it might be helpful as you saw the latest phase from Taylor Engineering, and we had some preliminary concepts of design and estimated of cost were up around like $13 million, and we don't have $13 million, so the best place to go is to ask for the state. This has multiple layers of help to get some appropriation dollars. And it was also a recommendation from the Find Executive Director, Ms. Zimmerman, to maybe possibly submit for an appropriation. So this is number six on your list and new, if you'd like to move forward.
Yes, I support that.
Okay. This is the last priority I had on the list was Old Kings Road Phase 3 construction. So we are working through Phase 2 now. If you recall, the state legislature gave us $18.2 million, I believe, for Phase 2, and that should be underway sometime next year. This is just continuation of that project to get you through, I believe it's like from Frontier to Forest Grove fore-laning.
Could I just, just ask as a new guy? This has been, this project's been going on a long time, and I get confused with the Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 2A, Phase 3, exactly where we are and what's been funded and what hasn't. So I'd ask for, maybe I could get a separate briefing for someone just to bring me fully up to speed.
Yes, sir. I will tell you that the longstanding history dates back to, former Mayor Nett's advocated for this to be on the TPO work plan back in like 2009, 2010, and it stays on the TPO list. It just loses funding over higher priority projects in Volusia County. So we were very grateful we were able to move forward with Phase 2, where it bottlenecks from the bowling alley to just past, you know, Club Row, which is BFW and the Elks and all of that.
Frontier.
I just, I just need to make sure I.
And then part of the reason why it's phased is because you can't ask for that much money all at once, so, you know, funding it separately. But to the City Manager's point, the, it's all on the TPO list of priority projects. It's just every couple of years, they redo the criteria, and then it starts shifting a little bit as everybody advocates. But I believe all the. But I believe all the design, in terms of whether it's cost feasible, is completed, it's all just ready to go, it just needs the money. So as soon as it gets high enough on the list, then we get that F-dot money to do it.
I just wanted to get you up to speed on that. And, and so we're, this, this request is to the state, or who's going to fund this?
It would be a direct appropriations, like we had for Phase 2.
Okay, not, not F-dot.
Right, because it's not making it into the priority of the F-dot five-year work plan.
Three specifically fell quite a bit. Two was in the top five based on the previous criteria, but then they reworked the criteria, so it fell out of the top five, I believe, because it was, it was poised to be funded, but then again, the criteria changed.
Uh, so, yes?
Yes.
Okay, and then the last one, Mayor, you mentioned adding Fire Station 26 as a direct appropriation, or I'm sorry, Fire Station 22, as a direct appropriations for cultural and historical purposes.
Yes, yes ma'am, if we have consensus for that.
Have my support on that?
Yes.
Do you have that where you would like to rank it? I just want to make sure.
Leave it where it's at. That would be like lowest on my-
Number, number eight. And we are actively working with our grant consultant on applying for the grants through Division of Arts and Cultural Resources, and we did partner with the Historical Society on a grant for the country's 250th celebration, so we are actively working on that.
Okay, so are we good with the rule?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor, sorry. I did have a question about policy, since we had mentioned maybe adding SB 180. I know we had a representative from the dispatchers come during proclamation and talk about supporting the labeling of dispatchers as first responders, so I don't know if the council had any interest in maybe adding that to the list as kind of a policy, a support for that policy change as well. I know we don't really have necessarily any draft legislation to go on. I've been talking to representatives about it myself, but I wanted to see if the council had any thoughts on supporting that as a city.
Absolutely have my support on this.
And, and-
That would be like a third policy.
Yes, yeah.
Not funding, but-
Yeah, it would just be a policy position.
And, and the three of us actually met with the sponsor of that bill, Representative Danny Alm, my classmate from the University of Florida, so he's, we've got an advocate for this particular policy issue that I think, you know, we're pushing on an open door with-
I spoke with, when I spoke with Representative Greco, I, I pointed him in that direction as well, to say, hey, he's tried this before, you know, I don't know what the wording is, if it needs to be tweaked, or at least at a minimum, he could probably educate on why it didn't get more support and what changes we maybe need to do. Yeah, I, I assume mostly it's financial, because it would entail some increased expenditures on the state's behalf for first, or for dispatchers as first responders, in terms of, I believe, FSR, FRS and some medical insurance type outlays.
Well, and then I think it's also important that, you know, this council take a policy decision on our concerns with Senate Bill, you know, 180 and going forward.
684, too. I mean, they've taken away local rule, or I should say, elected body rule on final plots, and they've said only administrative, is it 784?
784.
I apologize, yeah, 784, and now they're only administrative, excuse me, administratively approved, so-
There's like seven of them, actually, but-
I mean, they just keep whittling down, you know, what electeds have the ability to control. So, you know, it's just a general policy, that local rule needs to come back to the localities.
That would kind of be what that option, too, would be on specifically State Bill 180, but also those other points, because we made-
Yeah.
And with Senate Bill 180, we'll be joining the fight with, with, you know, a host of other municipalities and counties, so I think, you know, taking that position and moving forward is, is important.
And Councilman Miller, I can reach out to the county, because the county is going to take over dispatching-
Yeah, they're now joint dispatch.
And maybe it's a joint policy that we're moving forward with for the dispatchers.
That'd be great, yeah, thank you.
If I can, thank you so much for bringing that up, too, because that always kind of slips off the radar, but it's really important, and they work so hard. I, I want us to just be really focused on other groups that we can kind of team up with as we go into this session, like the county, but also, you know, for all the chagrin that the HBA takes from a lot of people, they were there with palm cards advocating in Tallahassee for, for money for our utilities. So they were a really big partner in getting and helping to get, bring money back into our community for our utilities. So, you know, looking for groups like that, that we know are from the community and that might be going to Tallahassee, even in some of our animal advocacy groups, when we're looking at money for the humane shelter, things like that, just really kind of being mindful of who else we can team up with and make sure we're in lockstep from a policy perspective in Tallahassee with.
Absolutely.
Agreed, yeah. If there are any animal advocacy groups going to Tallahassee that we can do something similar with, if they can bring palm cards with our priorities, because we're working together on that, that would be great.
One follow-up, Lauren, if you could, you and Laura, when they get ready to put together that book this year, can we kind of lean forward and get it before we're walking into the meeting, the joint meeting?
Agreed.
That was a little bit, we don't need to be doing business like that, so-
Yeah, I think it was, part of that was because it was election, so we couldn't set our priorities until after November, and then it was due January or something like that, so we should have a little bit more time this time.
So we're a little ahead of the game. Ms. Albanese, who puts together that booklet, has asked for our stuff by September, so with you adopting your priorities today, then I can go back and update our wording and look at our matches and all of that, so it's more prepared for that booklet, so you'll have it ready for the delegation day.
Thank you, ma'am.
So these are your next steps, approve your priorities, which is on consent today, and then schedule meetings with the legislature, which is initiated by the Southern Group. We will present at that legislative delegation meeting, which I think is targeted for late September, early October, and then we will work with the Southern Group on submitting our House appropriation forms. And then one last thing that I had was, the Southern Group's contract was up for discussion last year, and City Council asked for it to be a one-year, and I would just like consensus to move forward with the renewal of that contract.
We're going to do it on a yearly basis?
That's what was the direction last year.
Yearly basis is still fine?
Yeah, I have my consensus, yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Just one thing really quickly, Mayor, since the priorities are on the consent, can we go ahead and just for the purposes of the record, make sure that when we approve the consent, we are approving the priorities with the addition of Fire Station 22, and then the policy positions as well?
Yes.
When that comes, you guys can pull it from consent and make a motion to amend, and-
Okay, so whoever's doing that motion, let's just make sure we don't leave that out.
And, and I would just emphasize again, in my time at the county here, there have been times in the past where we didn't want to prioritize things, and I'm big on prioritizing things, because when you go up there and you hand some, hand a congressman or one of our representatives, or Senator, House, and you hand them 12 things, that doesn't do a whole lot good. You've got to, you've got to have some priorities.
Yeah, 12 things become no things. And, and we'll get, they'll give us feedback as well, what things they think have the best chance, or what things they'd like to champion.
I think that's important, especially when we get together with the, with the county, make sure our priorities-
So last time, we had a similar list of eight or nine priorities, but ultimately we only pushed on the top priorities that, based on the feedback that we got, which we rewarded those, I think, the top three, so that, that strategy has worked for us, yeah. Agreed.
Yep. Funding, funding is getting tight, we all know that. That's it, Lauren, you good?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
We're moving on to Item G minutes. We have Item G 3 minutes of the City Council, August 5th, Business Meeting, August 12th, Workshop. Any amendments or allocations on that?
Mr. Mayor, move approval of the minutes.
We got a motion to-
Second.
Second, I'll, favor say aye?
Aye.
I'll oppose.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. We're moving on to Item H, ordinance of the second read.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have an ordinance for 2025-11 Hargrove Lane Zoning Map Amendment, Application 6253, and as a friendly reminder, this is a quasi-judicial matter, so if you could, please declare your ex parte.
This is quasi-judicial, any ex parte communications?
No, sir.
Just emails from some residents?
No, I have met with people in the area, but no, nothing going to affect my vote.
Okay, same, same with me, just emails from constituents, so there you go. We good, Mr. Duffy? All right, thank you. Yes, Mr. Hanson?
Good morning.
Good morning, Michael Hanson, Community Development. Second read here, just preface, I've incorporated some of the answers to some of council members' questions in the PowerPoint. I'll scroll through to the, the additions in those answers. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions. And then also, the applicant and the representative from SRM did provide an updated PowerPoint that helps address some of the council members' questions that we had at the last meeting on August 5th. Once again, the proposal here is to rezone this, this property here, that's 36.65 acres, Staff's not received any further public participation, or people reaching out directly to me from members of the public. As far as something new to the PowerPoint, it was an inquiry, an inquiry from a council member as far as analyzing various uses allowed between industrial 1 and industrial 2 zoning. So for the purposes, as it'll benefit the entire council, I've included these use breakdowns within the actual presentation. This use table is actually two slides, so I can go back and forth as, as you may need. For the purpose of it, anything that has a P next to it is permitted. Anything that has an S is permitted via special exception, and then anything that may have an L next to it is technically permitted, however, we have an additional section of code that has additional requirements. This particular property is currently IND-1, so anything in that first column that has a P or an S is theoretically permitted. IND-2, if the property is rezoned, will have to follow the use table under IND-2, so anything that is allowed under IND-1 that isn't allowed under IND-2 would no longer be allowed on the particular property. Now, as far as these use tables, I wanted to draw attention that it's not meant to be a fully exclusive list of different uses. We do have a section in our code that's under LDC Section 3.01.07, for uses not listed in the chapter, that allows the Land Use Administrator to make a determination based on uses that may be similar in nature and character. We use the North American Industry Classification System Manual as a guide in making those determinations Here's the other half of that list, as far as the various uses. Typically, in taking a look at the different uses allowed, a lot of the more industrial-related uses are allowed under industrial 2, however, within the IND-1 zoning district that it currently has, there's some uses that were also included at the time of adoption of the LDC, that were typically uses that were already happening, that were deemed to be compatible with IND-1, whereas they might not necessarily be compatible with IND-2. As a particular subject property's vacant, the, the applicant is well aware of these use types and potential limitations, so if this property is rezoned, their proposed use for a concrete batch plant does fall under the IND-2 uses. There was a question whether or not it could be potentially need a rezoning, or a potential special exception. Under Section 4.14 of our Land of Omicode, a concrete batch plant is a specified use for IND-2. So that's the justification for the rezoning as opposed to a special exception. This particular slide, as you may recall from the last time, is showing the location of those public water wells that are the yellow circles at the southeast and southwest portion of the property. During the last meeting, there was a, a question that was brought up, whether or not the application would be looking at either using 10,000 gallons a day or 14,000 gallons a day for potential water usage. Staff reached out after the first read to get a, a determination whether or not that 14,000 gallons would, you know, trip any kind of issue with competing our, our public potable water wells, as far as our supply wells, as far as competition with them. And in that regards, I reached out to Deputy Director Pete Rossell and our contracted hydrogeologist. Mr. Rossell replied back that the city has a robust routine as, as far as exercise and monitoring, tracking aquifer levels, detecting overuse and recharge changes, there's drawdown test measures to take a look under the pumping conditions, which help determine whether there's sustainable yield, and he wanted to draw attention to the application material that was included with the, the last submittal, that the applicant's fully aware of the location of those city Palm Coast water wells that are permitted under our consumptive use permit for St. John's Water Management District, 1947, which draw from a confined surface aquifer at depths approximately 65 to 90 feet in depth below sea level, and to protect those existing water resource, the applicant will conduct appropriate modeling and hydro, hydrological analysis during their permitting with St. John's Water Management District, and if there's any potential impact, the applicant's prepared to mitigate the risk by constructing the well at a deeper level, within the upper Floridian aquifer at approximately 125 to 180 feet below sea level, to ensure that there's no interference with the city potable water wells. There's also static monitoring level that helps identify signs for aquifer depletion, reduced recharge, and drawdown detects interference between the wells and the aquifer transmissivity. Our contracted hydrogeologist with CCI Water, this is Mr. David Robinson, replied back to me that assuming that there's a 15-hour window for daily use of groundwater, essentially from midnight to 3:00 PM, per the response that the applicant previously supplied for our questions, that would equate to an average flow rate of about 16 gallons per minute. It was in their opinion that this would not interfere with the operations of the city's nearby water wells. And one, personally, when I was hearing this, this amount of gallons, you know, I happen to be a planner and, you know, have a, just a single-family residence in, in the community, and 10,000 seemed like, you know, a lot of zeros after it, so I did some volumetric measuring to conceptualize how much that is. So inside a cubic foot of water can hold, or a cubic foot can hold 7.48 gallons of water. So 10,000 gallons equates to about a size of a swimming pool that measures 15 feet wide by 15 feet long and 6 feet deep. So 14,000, that changes the length of the pool from 15 feet deep, or 15 feet long, to about 20 feet deep. So you're looking at kind of a small residential pool, and that's per day, as far as what their draw is, if that helps conceptualize it for you a little bit. Council also asked, as far as getting some kind of measurements, as far as where this proposed use is, or their proposed development, and the applicant provided this kind of pink overlay where their operations are planned to be on the site, and this is conceptual nature as well, because it still has to go through a technical site plan, but staff hyperimposed it on to the, the property, it's, was set with, and, and set with the actual scale of a plan that we had, with known measurements. So based on the length that I scaled it out, we're looking at, from their vehicle bay, you're approximately 441 feet from the edge of the pavement on the cul-de-sac, from that edge of pavement on, on the cul-de-sac, to the aggregate storage, you're looking at approximately 464 feet from- approximately 464 feet from the nearest adjacent building. So that's the property to the west over at 15 Hargrove Lane. You're looking at approximately 630 feet to where the aggregate storage bin is, as far as some of the distance. Like I said, this is conceptual nature because their site plan can change a little bit during the technical site plan application. But under the IND-2 use, the front setback is 35 feet, the interior sides and rear are 15 feet. And the required landscape buffer is substantially smaller because you're looking at, against IND to IND use type, you're looking at a C-type buffer which is 10 feet. Otherwise, against a non-specially designated road, you're looking at another 10-foot. And there's some screenage requirements in our LDC section. So based on the proposed scale here that you see before you, the development's looking at being substantially located more interior of the property, well outside of those required That ultimately addresses all the questions that the council had for me with the first read. If you have any questions for me now, I'd be happy to entertain them, otherwise I can pull up the applicant, or have the applicant come on up, and I can pull up their updated PowerPoint presentation that addresses some of the questions that you had for them.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Any follow-up for Mr. Hanson?
I just have a question as far as this actual process. Is it not possible for this specific applicant to request a special exception to zoning 1 in order to do a batch plant? Because as we have learned, a batch plant is very different than a cement plant. And I think, I know for me, my concern is not so much their operation because I think they have a very good operation and I feel it's cleaner than other possible industrial 2 uses. So, is this, and obviously, they apply however they want to apply, right? We can't control that. But is it possible for a special exception in industrial 1 for a batch plant rather than having to do a complete rezoning to industrial 2?
Ma'am, staff looked at very question up prior to the second read. And under the glossary section of 14.02 of our Land of Omakod, there's definitions for manufacturing light, manufacturing heavy. Manufacturing heavy does include language for a cement plant. Manufacturing heavy is allowed via a special exception within the light industrial zoning. However, I think it's prudent to say that oftentimes there's some misconception between a cement or concrete. I think some people might use that interchangeably. Cement is a material that is created via crushed rock and heated up, it's kiln-fired, and it uses an ingredient in concrete. Where concrete uses the cement powder dust with aggregate material and they mix with water. Per our Land of Omakod, a cement plant could technically be special-conditioned under IND-1. I would argue that's probably more intense use than a concrete batch plant itself. But in our Land of Omakod, under Section 14.14, it specifies specifically that a concrete batch plant is an IND-2 use. So it's that concrete batch plant because it's a different definition. It doesn't fit under the glossary definition for manufacturing heavy. That'd be, a use that'd be tied to that IND-1.
So that's where I'm kind of struggling, because I agree with you. I think that 1 is more intense, and the batch is not the more intense of these, yet we allow a special exception under, or an application for a special exception under IND-1. But it seems for the less intense use of the batch plant, we're not allowing a special exception application under IND-1. So, I mean, look, obviously, they have their own teams and their own attorneys and all of those things. I'm just curious as to, you know, what your interpretation of that was and whether or not that's a possibility, not only for this one, because we know there's more coming down the pipeline, but for others as well.
And that's exactly where we arrived as staff. I had a conversation with our deputy director regarding either cement plant versus concrete batch plant and whether or not this potentially be a special exception. And, you know, I fully agree with your thought process is that I believe concrete batch plant would be less intense than a cement plant because you're looking at probably less air quality issues regarding that. I know we're in the process of updating the Land of Omakod to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, and that could be something that we could maybe adjust and update as necessary, you know, as far as, you know, whether or not a concrete batch plant could be considered for a special exception in the future.
I just think if we're looking to advocate for cleaner industry, and we know that a batch plant is cleaner than a cement plant, it's something that we should certainly look at in the LDC while you guys are going through it, maybe making recommendations as staff of things to look at.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can definitely take a look at that. And if it is in the future allowed as a special exception, then with special exceptions, the council's able to put conditions on those. But as is with the rezoning, this particular applicant's kind of, in my opinion anyways, gone kind of above and beyond as far as making sure that they meet our environmental criteria that we have for rezoning.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You have something?
Yeah, I just, looking at this, since we had the first reading, I have some questions. And one is that I think this is a bigger decision than just this particular concrete batch plant. This really sets the stage for the future of the kind of businesses we bring into the city. And I have one, I'm going to ask, and maybe there won't be any support for this, that we do a continuance on this because I think there are some questions that I'd like answered. Number one, when the briefing was done originally, and I agree with this, they talked about six to eight minutes between trucks being on the road, on Hargrove. And that's not really a lot of traffic if you think about numbers of vehicles. But I don't think there's been a traffic study of Hargrove where it is now. I checked, but we haven't done that. I would like to see us do a quick, maybe a one-month car study. I've been told that at the intersection of Route 1 and Hargrove in the morning, 7 to 9 o'clock, there are a lot of people who work on Hargrove. There are some safety issues concerning that intersection with Route 1 as far as getting out onto Route 1, which is a high-speed road. There's no traffic light. Apparently, there can't be a traffic light because it's too close to Palm Coast Parkway, I've been told. I don't know if that's true or not. But I would like to see is have, my position right now is a continuance on this issue to look at, do a quick traffic study just to see what the impact would be on what we have now. When you add, it's not just the concrete trucks, it's what you're adding to existing traffic. I think the safety of Route 1, the interchange there is significant. And I just, I just feel that this is an important enough decision for the future of the city as far as what are we going, what are we doing in the way of attracting businesses into the city? And above one way or the other, this could have a much more significant impact than it would seem just by this particular issue. So, that's kind of where I am right now. I'd like a little more time, and I'd like to see that traffic study done just to have some facts. There are no facts on that right now. And see if it would affect anything. So that's where I am.
So, just to jump in on this, I did ask this question during our meeting prior, the briefing prior to the first read in regards to the traffic. And the answer that I got was that based on the zoning usage of that entire roadway, the build-out right now already meets our service level as if it was already built out. I'm not sure if there has been, and, you know, and that's conceptual, right? That's a determination of kind of what we expect the usage to be versus what the actuals are. So, I don't know if there has been any actual traffic studies done in recent times to kind of show us how much traffic is on this areas, the roads in this area.
If I could clarify to that point, this particular property has an active development order for that luxury car condo and flex space storage facility. During that application, the need for a traffic study was waived because the former city traffic engineer determined that, as Council Member Miller stated, that Hargrove Grade and Hargrove Lane were essentially designed to be able to support that amount of traffic at that build-out. So that traffic study was not required for that application. And when this application came in, that was still valid, and our senior traffic planner, Mr. Nguyen, didn't require a traffic study for the application.
Well, so what you're at, are you?
I'm asking that we do a...
You're asking to table it until we have a traffic study conducted for the area considering a batch plant in there?
So, Mr. Sullivan, yeah, are you making a motion?
Well, I think we, we're not quite there.
You can, you can make it at any time.
Well, we can keep, we can discuss. I'd like, I got a couple of questions for the developer, or Mr. Hercules, could you come up? And maybe you can answer this too, Mr. Hanson. How many, how many operations do we have like in the city?
As far as concrete batch plants, I'm not aware of any actually within city limits, sir.
We have any in our city, right?
We have another application at Planning Board tomorrow night for one, on Hargrove Grade at the T intersection of Hargrove Lane and Hargrove Grade. Otherwise, this application's the first that we're tracking within city limits.
Yes, sir. And your name, sir?
Kurt Wimpay with Alliance Engineering. I'm the representative for Jelcorp, the property owner, and I'm joined with Matt Bossarabos here today with Jelcorp, and of course, Mr. Brian Hercules who was here last time. And I appreciate the questions on traffic. I actually did a lot more information research on that to look closer at that. I'd be happy to answer some more questions if the council would like.
Let me ask you this. What is, what would be your market share? So you would, for our city, if we allowed you to establish this facility, you would have 100% market share for our city?
I'm going to turn that question over to Mr. Hercules.
I don't know.
It wouldn't be 100%.
It wouldn't be 100%, but we would...
What would you expect?
We would anticipate, you know, a large portion of the market share to be here because it's local. One thing about a batch plant that people don't understand is once that truck is loaded, you basically have one hour to pour, to get good product. Right now, there's trucks coming out of Bonnell and other places that are coming here to serve. So if we're able to put a plant here and successfully achieve that, then we're going to have a better distribution of quality product in the community, which in turn, we would hope, not only because of the competitiveness of the marketplace itself and the requirements of the marketplace, that yes, we would anticipate getting 40, 50% of the market.
Okay. And how significant would that be to bringing down prices of concrete in our city?
I think it would be significant.
So, developers and builders of anything that needs concrete, it would significantly impact the cost of that building as far as the base foundation of that building? Or any other structures there?
Our responsibility would be competitive in the marketplace.
Okay. That was my question. Anything else from the council? For the developers?
Mr. Sullivan, I don't know if you wanted your questions answered from the traffic perspective.
Well, I still would like actual facts on the traffic, because I've heard different things on that. And that's really the issue, as I thought through this, that I'm concerned about. And the fact that it's hard to say, I'd say there is a safety concern at the intersection of Hargrove and Route 1 because of the fact of the high-speed traffic there. As you indicate, once you put the cement mix into the truck, the truck has to get someplace, you know, a specific amount of time. And sometimes there are multiple trucks required, so there is, it's not exactly the same as other traffic. There's some priorities involved there. And I'd just like to see if the numbers hold that what we have there now in the way of a road. By the way, driving down the road again, I didn't see any chunks of concrete laying in the middle of the roadway. The road looked pretty clear and pretty secure. But anyway, I've been out there two or three times. But in any event, I do think that actually having the facts of what the traffic flow is currently would be worthwhile. I think this is, again, my only concern here is not the batch plant. You've explained how you're going to do it, and I think it is a clean industry and all that. But the question is, have we really looked at all the issues in detail and have actual facts, not just opinions? Because I know we have great traffic engineers and all that kind of thing, but I'd still like to see the actual current flows.
Thank you, sir. My question. Mr. Hanson, what would be, do we have an estimate on the impact fees for transportation for this project and how it would affect upgrading, resurfacing, or traffic signals on Hargrove?
As far as traffic signals, I don't have that information available to answer at this time, sir.
Okay. Do we have any estimate?
We looked at potential impact fees for like fire rescue. It's typically about 70 cents per square foot. Transportation, I believe, is 1,978 per 1,000 square feet. EMS and law is approximately $80 per 1,000 square feet. So ultimately, it would depend on the size of the development when it comes in for technical site plan to analyze it for how much impact fees that it would likely have to pay into.
Okay. And how long would it take to approximately get, for us to get a traffic study considering the change in the zoning?
That largely depends on the type of traffic study. If it's something typically a trip generation study, I think Mr. Wimpay could get that generated fairly quickly.
Okay. Anything else for Mr. Hanson or the developer? So is that, is that what you want to do, Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, I would hope we could do something like that and have the information back here within maximum 30 days.
Well, make a motion and we'll go from there.
Okay. My motion is that we, that I'm asking for a continuance of this second reading for a long enough period in order to do a traffic study and safety study of what the impact would be of the concrete plant and the trucks adding to the existing traffic on Hargrove.
Okay, we have a motion? That's what I'm asking for. We have a second? To table it until we get a... No? No second? Okay, any further discussion?
I do want to make a few comments. I just don't want to make you gentlemen stand there while I'm making my comments. So I just wanted to make sure there's no more questions for the applicant. We're good? Okay, thank you very much. I didn't want to make you all stand there.
We do, we do have a presentation we'd love to deliver still. I don't know if that's possible or...
Yep, it's perfectly fine. If you want to go ahead, go through your slides. Yes, sir. You can. Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Thank you so much. So I'll start with traffic, since that seems to be the big subject this morning. This site was previously approved, this was actually Phase 2 and 3 of a Flex Warehouse project that was approved back in the late 2000s. Phase 1 being the development across the street on Hargrove Lane, 15 Hargrove, I believe. That was Phase 1 of the development. Phases 2 and 3 consist of approximately 270,000 square feet of Flex Warehouse. And the trips generated by, in researching the ITE Trip Generation Manual, which is the national standard, is approximately 1,272 trips. So the property could be developed in that fashion and produce 1,272 trips. That's a lot of trips. You know, a lot of Hargrove is like that. So I just wanted to go ahead and let you know what those trips could be. We're proposing 150 trips max, I think, at max build-out and max service. So that's approximately 12% of what could be, or 1/8 of what could be. So it's a dramatic reduction for this development, looking at the traffic trips, trips per day. I hear your concern. I've done a lot of traffic engineering in Palm Coast. We just did the roundabout at the north end at Old Kings. Done several developments there where I understand the level of service for US-1. US-1 has an extremely low, or a high level of service, low trips. It's very light in traffic north of Palm Coast Parkway as compared to similar four-lane highways like that. So, the traffic study's going to show that it operates at a good level of service, like a level of service A or B when done. I understand there's some queuing concerns and delays on Hargrove? Absolutely. You know, but there's not that many left trips on US-1 from Hargrove, so a lot of those trips go to the right, towards Palm Coast Parkway and other areas. You know, I'm not there out in the morning, and I can see where it would be good to go ahead and look at that. to go ahead and look at that. But again, the city's engineers, Mr. Grunwald and Mr. Fong Glenn, both agreed that we didn't need to do the traffic study, that it was fine, because Hargrove was designed for the build-out of that industrial park. So just bringing that up for information. Secondly, I wanted to follow up on Mr. Hanson's presentation. Thank you very much. Great presentation. As far as the water and the wells, I just wanted to be known that the city directed us to put in the well. Okay? That was not a choice of ours. The city directed us to do that. So, and our consultants agree with the city's consultants that it is negligible. In fact, the city has 67 wells, raw water wells in the city, and produces approximately 9.6 million gallons a day. Our, even if we go to 15,000 gallons per day, it's a very small amount compared to what the city actually is drawing already. In fact, it's 1,000, so it's, it's pretty small. Another area that was discussed previously was buffering and buffers, and we're going to show, Mr. Hercules is going to show a little bit of a revised site plan, that will show that we're going to do an S curve coming in to the site, which will eliminate the view corridor down the driveway. And so therefore, you'll see trees and, and no development in reality. And they've also agreed to increase the, the minimum buffer, which is 10 feet in industrial, increase that to 40 feet along the cul-de-sac. We're also going to show that the buffers around the, the rest of the site are hundreds to thousands of feet in every direction. In other words, it's all preserve, wetlands preserved, floodplain. So the development is very distant in every direction except right at the cul-de-sac. Even on Hargrove Grade, you know, there's a 100-foot canal tract, and we have wetlands on our sites, so it's 300 and something, 400 feet, which you'll see on the slide in a minute, between any development there. So, pretty protected, and we want to be good neighbors. You know, there's, I mean, in the end, I think it's going to be a great development for the city of Palm Coast, needed in Palm Coast. We don't want to, you know, affect anybody in Hargrove, for sure. So I'm going to leave it at that. So that's me. I'm the engineer, so I, I present facts. He's the expert on the plant, so I'm going to ask Mr. Hercules to come up and present his information. Thank you.
Again, my name's Brian Hercules. I'm with SRM Concrete. Appreciate the opportunity to be back here today, where I have your wife's birthday. Today's my anniversary, and my wife is looking forward to me flying home this afternoon with something besides my luggage. So I'll be able to do a little shopping while I'm, but I do appreciate this opportunity. I want to put one thing on the table, is Kurt mentioned, as far as the buffers. I know that was important to some of you, to make sure that we had good buffers, and we're willing to do those extras. One of the other things that we talked about at the office when I got back, you know, the batch plant, as, as you've described, fits in that IN-2 zoning. Anything else that we would do compatible on that property, and you'll see in a minute, I'm going to talk about, we, we tend to be a business that comes in, we don't go away. We, we're here. We want to be here, and we want a, a long-term relationship. Our company is celebrating its 25th year this year. We bought property, we've never sold property. We operate our plants. Anything else that we would put on this site, because of the size of the site, would fit clearly in an IN-1 zoning, based on your chart? And I know there's some things, and the city manager, I, the last six years, I sat in your chair in Smyrna, Tennessee. This is an after-the-political side job for me. One of the things that we did many times, that we're open to this, I know there's some things in the IN-2 district probably are not good compatible fits for this area, and I mean the community as a whole. We have no desire, or ever will have desire, to be in the adult entertainment business. We don't have any desire to be in the junkyard business, and those kind of things. And I'm comfortable telling you today, as we go through this process, we're willing to eliminate those out of the restriction.
Are you willing to do a deed restriction for certain things?
Certainly.
Okay.
Absolutely.
If I could clarify real quick, those particular uses, junkyards are prohibited use already within the city. It would require a supermajority vote of the council to allow one. And adult-oriented businesses, although they're allowed in IN-2, our code of ordinance is under Section 16-84, has a 2,500-foot buffer requirement from the nearest residentially zone property, which would be Track 1 at Palm Coast Parkway. And this site is within 2,500 feet, so therefore, couldn't be developed already with an adult, adult-oriented business.
And I was just using those as examples. If there's some things in there that do not make good sense for the community, we want to be a steward of that as well. So I appreciate you pointing that out. I'm not going to bore you with who we are. We've talked about that, and, and, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that you've actually gone to one of our sites and seen the type of operation we operate. I did want to, real quickly, if we could move forward through the slide presentation, keep going, keep going. Yeah, so here is the, the site. We've relooked at the site layout, and he talked about that S curve at the entrance. So when you come in off of the cul-de-sac, if you come down and made that loop in the cul-de-sac, you would not be able to see back, and we're willing to put that, I think it's a 10-foot buffer, we're, we're willing to come back to 40 feet there again. Unless you come down that driveway, you're not going to see what we're doing in the back back there. We did show that future development comply with ID, IND-1 uses, like warehousing, storage, maintenance, parking, those kind of things. The only thing that we would see is possibility of some, some parking and/or, at a future date, a maintenance-type shop. It would be something where we'd work on our own equipment, just changing a tire, changing the oil, those kind of things, not anything, we're not rebuilding trucks. We do that in another place. Any questions on that?
Yes, sir.
These were some of the concerns that we heard from the community, as they spoke, and as, from the dice, you spoke about some of these things. So we just wanted to touch on a couple of these. Number one was dust, cement might have the effect on nearby businesses and health, potential pollution of the canal, rezoning precedent, set precedent for future undesirable businesses. Truck traffic can impact roads and leave debris. Concrete plants can create a lot of noise. So if I could, what I'll do is very quickly, dust and cement impacts. Will the plant produce a lot of dust? As I told you last time, that's a no, because of the things that we do. We will be concrete paving the whole entire lot. We control the water on that lot. We clean that lot. We'll be putting in a high-pressure truck wash that all the vehicles will go through before they go out onto the road, to eliminate any gravel or anything that could be on the truck. We will be using a high-density dust collector, which, as I shared with you, on the Stevens plants that we use are built out of Kentucky, and you're welcome to go look at that site yourself. That dust collector will collect 99.95% of the dust, up to one micron, two microns, it's So we feel very comfortable that we're not going to be creating a lot of dust in the community. The other thing we didn't point out last time, but I think it's a given, is we do have to have an air quality permit, and we will be applying for that permit. We have them in the state of Florida in many locations already with EPA. Will there be silica hazard for the community? No. There is silica associated with cement, and if you go to the cement plants where it's a high volume, it's, it is a health issue. But we're talking about silica in a very small use, from the standpoint of the cement. Actually, silica in our cement mix, it's piped in through the truck, into the tower, and then into the truck and mixed with water. It's less than what you would find as far as walking the beach, because silica comes from the sand and the gravels and those kind of things. So it's not about whether there is, it's proportion. And nothing we do is a proportion of being a hazardous material. Will cement have health impact on the community? No. Again, Portland cement is primarily, you have skin and high irritant, furthermore, dust controls, buffers, setbacks will eliminate the potential for those exposures on the site. Pollution of the canal or groundwater, all stormwater runoff, we will be working with, as I explained to you, by doing the, the concrete cement cover of the, the site, we will direct all that water to those pits, where we'll take the aggregates and all those things, the heavies, and we'll take those out. Then we recycle that water, and it's actually used back through the truck wash, and then it's also distributed over through a system and a pump. All the aggregate bins, and we'll water that down to control the dust in those aggregate bins. Unlike asphalt plants, we can use wet product, because our product is a wet match. Are there hazardous chemicals on the site? We will have a double-wall diesel tank for fueling of our vehicles, but that is a double-wall tank that's meeting all the standards, the, the safety standards, and cement was addressed previously, and there's no PFAs are used in our, in the production of our, our cement. Will this rezoning set precedent? No, there are already two other sites zoned IND-2 nearby. Rezoning could allow other undesirable business to operate in the property. I've talked about that. We're willing to put any restrictions past the IND-2 for the batch plant onto the rest of the site, as a deed restriction, or whatever is appropriate from a legal standpoint for the community. Truck traffic, we've already talked about the truck traffic. Will the trucks leave debris on the roads? Again, I talk about the high-pressure wash that we use. That's, not everybody uses those, but we feel very serious about being a good neighbor. We don't want to put any out on the road. Noise, again, there's very little noise. It's not an excessive amount of noise. When you think about it, probably the biggest generator of noise on our vehicles would be those backup beepers that OSHA requires us to have. But by the time you get anywhere from 300 to 500-foot buffer with a tree line that we're not going to disturb, I dare say you're going to hear most noise coming out of that plant whatsoever. Again, just quickly, the aggregate storage, the hopper, we can go through these. You saw this last time. This is our loadout for the aggregates that goes up through the conveyor belt to the actual mix. You see the dust collection system we put on, and feed belt there going into the hopper. Next slide. This is where the truck pulls under, is there's gates at the top there, where you see that cylinder in the center of the, the tower there. When that truck pulls in, those close, and that's when the dust collector comes on and pulls all that dust back out. And you have very, very good control of that dust. There's the high-pressure wash that all the trucks will go through, and that's those collection pits. As we said, we keep the, the cement very wet, keep all that moving to those pits, and use that as a clean-out and a recycle of the water. That's our typical batch house. That's what you would see basically at the site. And our trucks. That's a final product look. And these are the concerns that we addressed. I hope we've addressed those to your liking. We were talking about this opportunity, and I'm very happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Any follow-up questions for the developer? Mr. Hanson, do you have any follow-ups?
No, sir.
Okay. I will say that we are a growing community, and this is an industrial zone. And I think we, you mitigate the risk of environmental impacts by EPA standards and all the standards throughout the, the industry that these gentlemen are in. But we're going to grow, and we need, we need companies to come in here, provide concrete for development and building further out. So that's, that's my take on it. I, I understand the issues that have been raised by, by people that are currently working on Hargrove. But these, we have another one coming, right? You mentioned another one coming?
It's going to PLDRB tomorrow.
Yeah. So we, we, this is something, our city's going to keep growing, and we, we have very little industrial. I think it's less than 3%, Mr. Hanson?
I believe that number is correct, sir.
Less than 3% of our properties within the city are designated for industrial. So we are in a tight spot as far as industrial development. So any further questions from the council?
Well, just like, since my, my, my motion didn't, didn't get approved, I still think it's worthwhile, at this point, to do a traffic study on Hargrove for future development. In other words, if this, if this passes or not, there's still, there's still a question there in my mind about traffic on that street. As we say, there's more coming, and so it would be nice to have some hard facts on traffic flow in that area, so in the future, we don't have to go back over the same kind of questions. And I, as far as I know, from what I've checked, there's been no traffic, actual traffic counting analysis done on the intersection there with Route 1, and then back into the facility. There's very limited rear access there. You, you just have one way in, one way out. So any motion that comes forward, I would ask, maybe to add that as an amendment, that we do the analysis of the traffic flow.
Thank you, sir. And I'd also like the residents of Palm Coast to also note, and we don't have the graphic, graphic representation for it, but there's going to be an overpass that goes in, in that area, to that loop going out west. Now, we don't have the specific design, we have to go through all the engineering of how it's going to be routed, but for those people that are out there on Hargrove, just be aware that there is a major overpass that's going to go in out there, to your south, just south of you. Correct?
Yes.
It's going to be just south. So with that being said, can we get a motion?
Mayor, sorry, I have some comments. So I, I just want to reiterate the fact that it's not this specific applicant or development that is my concern, it's the zoning to industrial 2. And if we look at LDC 3.0, 3.01, it says, "The purpose of industrial 2, which is heavy industrial, is to permit a wide range of intensive industrial uses, which include, but are not limited to, those that are major uses, users of water, produce greater amounts of hazardous and regulated waste, storage of significant amounts of chemicals, produce air emissions, or substantially impact the landscape through mining and soil extraction. The district utilizes performance standards to ensure that impacts are controlled to protect public safety and welfare based on those uses." And then if we scroll to another section of our LDC, it specifically lays out the heavy manufacturing, and it says, "An establishment whose principal purpose is a mechanical or chemical transformation of materials or substances into new products, including the bulk storage of raw materials in which possess, in which process may emit noise, vibration, dust, odor, or pollutants. Activities include manufacturing, assembly, and fabrication, including large-scale or specialized industrial operations, processing and compounding of semi-finished products from raw materials into bulk for an industrial operation." It says, "Examples of heavy, heavy manufacturing include, but are not limited to, cement manufacturing, shipboat manufacturing, and similar uses." And the reason I bring that up, Mayor, is that at around 2 hours and 12 minutes or so, when the applicant was here last time, sir, one of you said, "If I were here representing a cement plant, I'd run me out of town." And the problem with the application going to industrial 2 is that it eventually could be a cement plant. And I understand your point, that you don't plan on going anywhere, you want to stay right, right here, you want to stay put, you want this to continue. Obviously, you want to continue on and have a successful batch plant. You, you're not intending on folding. We get that. But it's, it's a possibility that it could be that, and it's a possibility that it could set precedent for other cement plants in this area, because this isn't a, and this is why I ask this question, this is not an industrial 1 application for a special exception for you. This is a zoning change to industrial 2. And I appreciate your candor, I appreciate the efforts that you've made. If there are certain deed restrictions that, because I know you're under a purchase and sale agreement, conditional on this rezoning, if there are certain deed restrictions that can be put into place to make sure we, that we can mitigate or eliminate some of these other risks, I'd be much more inclined to consider the application. The issue for me is that we're not at that point yet. And when I read our code, and I go through the possibilities of what this could be and what this could emit, I have a lot of concerns about the, the, the climate and the other area, the other businesses in this park. I have a concern about the fact that Florida Hospital owns the property right there to the east. I have a concern about the fact that we have, there was a gentleman that came at the last hearing, who said, "Look, I'm in our TRX application process right now, because I want to open up more locations of my current business in this same industrial park." I get what you're saying, Mayor. I agree with you. I want more industrial as well. But these folks are industrial. They're industrial 1. They're light manufacturing. So there, we, we have to make sure that we're setting up our city for future success. And I would say it's not legal for us to say yes to these guys, just because they may run a clean operation... run a clean operation and then say no to any other applicants because they may in fact have a more intense use. They may in fact be a cement plant. This is not about just this company. It's about the zoning and based on the rezoning for any of the industrial 2 uses that could go on any pieces of these properties surrounding this area. So I've explained to you what could go here under industrial 2. Now let's talk about the current business owners and the risks that we're taking for the future of our city. I mentioned the property to the east, mentioned the property to the west, but if we look even to the east of the hospital, we have Astor Defense. We had press releases about how big of a deal it was for Astor Defense to choose our city as its, I think, first U.S. location for the production of their product. We had multiple press releases. We lauded that win for this city. Yet here we are, saying that the property, just two parcels over to them, could completely set the pace for changing the face of this industrial park. So, you know, we need to empower our current businesses. We need to empower the business owners that have been here, that have been taxpayers here, that have been employers in our community, and we need to encourage them. And if I were a business owner coming to the city of Palm Coast, moving to industrial 1, I'd say, "Well, it's industrial 1 now, but is it going to stay that way?" So are we discouraging more businesses? Is this a bait and switch for businesses to come to industrial 1 parks and then say, "Oh, well, city council has done this previously. Will they do it again?" And so those are my concerns if we approve this. I think it's lazy to do this. I think it's short-sighted. I think that, to your point, Councilman Sullivan, you know, if we do table this, maybe we see if the applicant can put some deed restrictions in play that can prevent this from becoming an industrial 2 where not only certain uses could be used on this property that could put these other businesses at risk, but also for other applicants that are coming down the pipeline as well. Because I'm telling you right now, from a legal perspective, if we look at the criteria that Mr. Hanson put up, which is the criteria per Section 2.06.03, thank you, Michael, for putting that up. Once you approve one of these parcels, it makes it harder and harder to disapprove others because you have a less compatibility argument at that point. And many of these criteria do not, to me, are not complied with if we do this. If we look at B, its impact on the environment and natural resources, forget about SRM. Look at what I just read from industrial 2. It absolutely could have an impact on the environment and the natural resources. C, its impact on the economy of the affected area, I've already talked about that, the effect that it could have on the surrounding businesses. E, any changes in circumstances or conditions affecting the area? Roads, traffic, possible flooding? The area out there already has flooding issues. You're going to now take down trees and add cement. And of course, any development could have the potential of doing that. I get that. But I haven't seen an analysis as to what these environmental and conditional impacts could be on the area. Compatibility obviously is huge. We don't need to go over that again. And then whether it accomplishes a legitimate public purpose. I hear what you're saying, Mayor. Yes, we need more industry. Yes, we need more commercial. But we don't need to sacrifice the future growth of this park in exchange for this one plant. I don't think that that accomplishes a legitimate public purpose. So based on the criteria analysis and based on where we are right now, I would say that we need to not approve this application. However, I would say that it's worth staff continuing to work with this specific applicant to mitigate with some surety for the future, not just saying, "Hey, SRM, thanks for what you're willing to do right now," but putting actual deed restrictions that prevent this type of development or other industrial uses in the future.
Vice Mayor, would you be willing to make a motion for them to go back and do a deed restriction on it just for that purpose, for that batch plant?
Well, and let me be clear. I didn't second Councilman Sullivan's motion only because it called for us to do a traffic analysis. I would say that the applicant needs to do maybe a current traffic analysis. I don't think the city should be paying for that. But I would make a motion to table it for the applicant to conduct a current traffic analysis and to work with staff on deed restrictions that would perhaps allow, A, the amended site plan that they've been working on with the extra buffers and all of that, and B, the deed restrictions. Because to me, that gives us actual surety of what we're looking at, what they're actually going to bring to the table and what we can prevent in the future. So I would make a motion to table based on them working with staff on those things.
So is that your motion?
I'll make that motion, yes.
You have a second?
Second.
There, we got a second, Councilman Sullivan. Any further discussion from the dice? What you got?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, you know, since the last time, since the first read, you know, I had the opportunity to do some research and learn more about, you know, we had some of our residents that came up and laid out comments, business owners that came out and laid out their plans on overall jobs. So if we're talking, you know, raw job numbers, their plans dwarf, you know, the potential employment that SRM could bring to us. And these are folks that have been in my house, right? Repaired my AC units. These are folks that have been here for a long time and are, you know, started it from nothing and are expanding it to a place where they're creating more jobs than what I think SRM can bring to the table. So that, those facts, those raw numbers and those plans are, I think, are important for us to consider as we move forward.
Thank you, sir. You'd also have to consider that when they do their expansions for more employees, they're going to need concrete also. Just the caveat to that. Any further discussion from the top? Yes, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the vice mayor kind of laid out a lot of the same concerns that I have on the first read in regards to zoning versus the particular use that's being presented by SRM. On its face, I think SRM is doing a great job in terms of mitigating those risks for that particular use. I think the concern is that the approving of the zoning change is opening up the box to any business necessarily that is allowed by industrial 2. So that's my main concern because things change. There could be an offer made on that property tomorrow after the zoning change that changes the nature of what potential business could be there, and so we would have no recourse in that regard. So I think the asks are appropriate in terms of those restrictions. If you could work with staff on those to try to limit any other uses that we deem too highly intensive for that area in terms of its, you know, compatibility with the existing businesses, I think that would be a good step forward to getting this done in the right way.
All right, thank you, sir. And Mr. Hanson, you did say that was the spot that they were going to put that auto place, and they pulled out of that deal?
That's correct, sir. There's currently an active development order for that luxury auto condo flex space. I was going to ask if this is okay as far as Vice Mayor is looking at potential deed restrictions for potential incompatible uses? If you guys wanted to provide me a list of which uses you determine as incompatible for us to have the applicant look at those deed restrictions? I have up on the screen our IND-2 uses.
That's a good point to bring up, Mr. Hanson. So if we could restate that motion with a little more specificity so that myself and staff can work so we have a good direction. So maybe give a little more what you're looking for, the deed restrictions, and what other requirements you guys are looking for.
And is this coming back? So you're giving staff direction because this was already noticed? We would have to properly renotice it? And when do you want it to come back, et cetera? So if we could just have some clarity on that, it'd be helpful for us.
I'm certain.
Yes.
Okay.
And we need at least a month.
I would think so. So did you have something you wanted to share, sir?
Maybe I didn't say it clear enough, but as far as the restrictions on a deed restriction, anything on that list outside the batch plant, I am willing to tell you today we will accept as a deed restriction.
Well, I think that...
You'd be willing to narrow it down to specifically that?
Just the batch.
Absolutely. Anything else we'll do on that site will be in an IND-1 use for us.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm comfortable telling you, any other restriction you have in the IND-2, I'll accept it today as a deed restriction as part of the motion.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so I think the motion would have to be amended to table this, to come back time certain, to allow the applicant to do the traffic study. When's the business meeting, last business meeting of September, maybe?
That's only a month, and we have to notice it. And we are trying to get the agenda out a couple weeks in advance. So maybe the first meeting in October?
October 7th.
Okay, so I would make a motion to table this until October 7th to present to us a deed restriction specifically to only allow for a batch plant and other industrial 1 uses and have the applicant do a traffic study. That would be my motion.
Second.
Got a second? Any further discussion? Are you clear, Mr. Duffy?
Yeah, because Ms. Pontiere amended her motion, so the motion was amended and it got seconded, so.
I agree with them. Okay, so we're all good? The council's good? Any further follow-ups? We're going to open it up for public comment concerning this specific item.
This has nothing to do with a cement company. This has to do with the fact that I am totally against changing any of the zoning law. It needs to remain as it is, as industrial 1. That's what the rules were. That's what it's supposed to be. Now, as pertaining to the cement company, according to internet, an average swimming pool holds up to 30,000 gallons of water. If you have a child drinking only a gallon of water a day, that affects 30,000 children. I would prefer to save that water rather than using it to give it a power wash. I would prefer that we save that water for the children. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And members of the public, we're having heart hearing you. If you could bring that mic closer to you so we could hear you.
Good morning, Commissioner, Mayor. I stand before you today not in opposition of progress, but in defense of responsible planning, infrastructure to integrity, and the safety of our community. You are being asked to approve a rezoning from light industrial to heavy industrial 2 to allow a concrete batch plant. Before you cast your final vote, I urge you to require a comprehensive traffic impact study, not a conceptual estimate, an actual full-scale analysis. Other key concerns on this are the single Egress point. The entire industrial complex has only one viable exit onto US-1, a four-lane divided highway. This intersection already bottlenecks during peak hours. Adding cement tracks and semis hauling raw materials will strain an already fragile artery. The infrastructure burden. Hargrove Grade and Hargrove Lane was not built for this level of heavy industrial traffic. What will the cost to the taxpayers be to repair and replace this road when it inevitably fails under the weight, especially the culvert for the St. Joe's Canal that runs through there on the north side of this property? The water quality? I couldn't have asked for a better tee-up than you guys' proclamation this morning for water quality. The environmental risk. The St. Joe's Canal runs the length of the proposed site and continues into the Graham Swamp. A contamination event here wouldn't just affect one parcel. It would smear through half of the city. Wetlands don't forgive mistakes. Then there's the chemical compatibility. Sunshine Belt and already H2 Zone, it was there before Palm Coast was a city. It was there, so we deal with them. They do hydrochloric acid, which is also known as meratic acid. And to quote the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health, the Chemical Safety Guide, Publication 2016-160, when hydrochloric acid comes into contact with calcium carbonate or cement dust, it can release carbon dioxide and hydrogen chloride gas, both of which are hazardous to inhale. The reaction is exothermic and may intensify airborne particulate exposure. It is especially relevant when cement dust is present in the air, such as near batching plants, truck washouts, or construction zones. May I also add, we not currently have a hazmat team or a trauma center. This isn't just about one plant. It's about setting a precedent. If you allow one incompatible heavy industrial 2 use, how will you deny the next? Let's not rush into what could cost us in dollars, safety, and trust. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Hope. You went over most of what I was going to talk about, so thank you for that. I own a dump truck business, and I've been in and out of SRM. What you see now is because they clean it up when they're doing these things. I've been doing this for seven years. I come in and out. I know what the concrete does. It's not just their trucks. It's everybody's dump trucks. It's all trucks coming in and out. If this gets put in Palm Coast, there's going to be trucks coming from Benel, Palm Coast, St. Augustine, all surrounding areas. The traffic is a huge concern. The road is a huge concern. Where it's coming in on the roundabout, it's going to ruin all of the businesses in that area. It's, they have a Mercedes BMW business. Those cars do not want to drive in and out behind dump trucks and things that are carrying stone and dirt and everything else. It will destroy all the small businesses. As she said earlier, it impacts everybody. There's no hazmat team, as Renee just brought up. The closest hazmat team is St. John's County. I was a paramedic and an EMT. The hazmat team is always busy. It's hard for them to get down here from St. John's County. So there's a lot of factors, not just this is going to bring things to Palm Coast. I understand the mayor's issue with wanting to bring industrial, but as you mentioned, this is not the kind of industrial that needs to be brought into this area. You guys don't have a lot of industrial areas, but this is not the one to bring in here. There's Sunbelt with chemicals. There was a chemical spill yesterday, I believe, at Sunbelt. There was another one that shut down all the businesses in the area. So it's, none of this is good. I have a feeling it's going to come in no matter what. My best-case scenario is a road that goes somewhere else. You mentioned there's a new road coming in. Could that be used? Could there be an easement put in where they use a different road versus Hargrove? So these are all concerns of the local citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Ken Moscone. I own a business over there off of Hargrove Lane. A lot of my concerns have just been addressed, but I just want to touch on a couple things. One, I would hope that the traffic study includes not a current traffic study, but an oversight of what's actually happening there. I pulled up a couple of articles, one from the news journal, Daytona Observer, that says they're putting a mock facility just north of Hargrove. That's going to be every single fleet vehicle for the city. I counted four just driving over here. I mean, that's a lot of vehicles that are now going to be just north of Hargrove Grade. That's on top of the 5,000 projected residences that are going to be built from Hargrove all the way up to Old Kings Road. There's a, I just pulled it up, the average Florida home has two vehicles. That's an additional $10,000, 10,000 vehicles that are going to be added to that. So that study needs to be a little bit more comprehensive than just, you know, a current traffic study. Because right now, as it stands, trying to get out of there at certain parts of the day is already difficult. You add, you know, heavy industrial, which brings these bigger trucks that need bigger leadway times to get across. The gentleman that was representing the land said, "Most of these trucks are going to be heading south." I don't know how he could, like, back that up when most of the new construction is going north. It says, you know, all these 5,000 residences are heading north. So if this concrete's going to facilitate the construction plans of the city, it's not going south. It's got to, you know, cross two lanes of a very busy highway and then head north. So the rest of my things have already been, you know, addressed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes, good morning. George Mail, Palm Coast. In my younger years, for many years, I worked at a sand and gravel pit, bank, and also a concrete plant. And concrete is a dirty business. Now, they claim they're going to take care of 99.9% of the dust, but as the rock, gravel, sand, everything that goes up the conveyors, up into the hopper, we have windy days here all the time. That's going to blow dust off there. I didn't see any pictures showing that the conveyors are covered like they are in some coal plants or whatever. They are not covered. That's going to create a lot of dust. They didn't talk about how many dump trucks full of sand and gravel are going to be coming They didn't talk about how many dump trucks full of sand and gravel are going to be coming and going all the time. With windy days, even though they have their loads covered, that's going to create a lot of dust going in. You're going to have the tank trucks coming in with the Portland cement to bring to the plant. When they hook up and unhook up, that creates dust. And it's just, what the drivers also use is a slightly acidic mixture to clean out their tanks after they deliver their concrete. Sometimes they dump it on the job and it's just covered over under the ground. Sometimes they come back to the plant, and I've seen them, and they just throw that in there, mix it up, and then dump it in the plant. That hasn't been talked about. Are these trucks going to do that, dump their load with their acidic nature to prevent concrete from building up inside the bin in the truck, which they have to do? Otherwise, it just adds to it and adds to it. So if they dump that in those pits, is that going to be taken care of? That is now an acidic mixture. And if we get a lot of rain, which we can, two, three, four inches a day, and those pits overflow, they go into the groundwater. And the map showed, you have two wells there. So now you're talking about contaminating well water. So yes, we need more jobs. Yes, we need more businesses, but this is not the right business, as far as I feel, to put in here. You are setting a precedent. I would just ask any of you, if you wanted, had a half-hour time of your day, there's a concrete plant probably dirtier than the one that they plan to put in down on US-1 and Benel by the overpass. Go park across the street in a safe place for a half-hour and just watch what happens, all the dust that's going on, the trucks coming in and going out. And we'll give you an idea of what this is. So to say they're going to control the dust even though they're 600 feet behind dusty days, this is a very, very fine dust. It's going to blow it in the air, and I guarantee it's going to cover everything around there, all the businesses. And the people who have businesses that don't want that, they have no choice but to get into it. So I just don't really feel you really truly understand how dirty a concrete plant is. They have plans to make it clean, and that's all well-intentioned and good, but I just don't really feel it's right for Palm Coast. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Brett Snyder from here Palm Coast spoke last meeting. I want to thank Councilman Gambaro and Councilman Sullivan for coming and talking to us at the Palm Coast Commercial and Industrial Center. We thank you for your time and just hearing. And Ms. Pontieri, thank you for addressing a lot of the needs that I came up here to speak about. One thing is the culvert can handle heavy industrial trucks on a regular basis. We don't, I don't think anyone actually knows the answer to that question. Also, the question of traffic, as one of my, I guess, community members in our close community spoke of. We are talking about changing from industrial one to industrial two with no secondary way out currently that is smart and wise to use with it being just a dirt road where our vehicles cannot go down. If it's wet, they get stuck. I would not drive my own personal vehicle down there. Others in our community have done that just to see, and, you know, maybe they visited one of the mechanics in our community to get their vehicle fixed afterwards. Mr. Mayor, you spoke of, there will be roads there. It's not there now. We're moving perhaps too fast to approve things when the infrastructure's not there and we don't have the infrastructure to know what the impact would be. So we are stuck with, what's the current impact? And how will that affect us as businesses trying to get in and out, not just at the beginning and the end of the workday, but also during lunchtime as well? There's a lot of businesses in there. And it is also the long-term as well that's been brought up by Ms. Pontieri in the sense of there might be another cement factory, batch factory, whatever it is, that will be applying. What's that road study going to be then? So it's not just one plant, but potentially two plants? What's the weight and what's the decrease of value for people wanting to drive back to where we are at, where we have small businesses that have grown out of people's garages? Not only that, we get, you know, 10 trucks driving in and out just on our street. Add that to another 10 trucks at the top of our street. What's that do to emergency vehicles when there is a chemical problem at Sunbelt, which happened again just recently? Or what if, you know, these concrete trucks going out cause an accident? That, the traffic on US-1 when there is an accident is beyond difficult to navigate. But further, these concrete trucks going into our city, making already congested areas, for example, Belt Air and Palm Coast Parkway heading east is already bald-necked for a majority part of the day. What's that going to do to the total traffic in the city of our town?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Jeannie Dorte. Ms. Pontieri, you were sounding really great until you got to your however and suggested letting them in if we can block others. I think we should take their own advice and run them out of town. Once these trucks are loaded, they are very heavy, and they're going to break down our roads. As I understand, new development are adapting a plan to do storm drains rather than swells. How much of this is connected to the cement company coming on board to develop the West Route expansion? Houses are not selling as they were. Developments need to slow down with this reduced demand. We cannot keep developing faster than our ability to serve. Our wastewater treatment plants cannot handle the extra load, especially wastewater treatment plant one. And we already know what wastewater treatment plant two is proposed to do with our drinking water in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I think it's afternoon and not morning. My name's Andrea, and I am located at 15 Hargrove Lane. I'm going to skip over some of the facts, as we all know what heavy industrial two is going to bring to the area and what it's allowed. We all know already that it poses real risks to the nearby residents and businesses. So I'm going to stand here before you today and ask that you do not allow the change of the rezoning. This is not a case of gradual industrial growth. It's an abrupt intensification with incompatible effects. I'd like you to take a moment and imagine pulling into church in your best-dressed attire, ready to listen to today's sermon, and all you hear is the noise pollution just a few feet away. Imagine being stuck with your child in the office with no way out because of an accident that happened out front with no evacuation plan, as was yesterday. Imagine having your car detailed inside and out right next to a concrete plant. Would you choose that business to clean your car? Or what about having your new car windows tinted? Imagine, would you pick the place next to the concrete plant? Would you consider buying from a local bakery next to a dusty concrete plant? Think about it. This shift in zoning would impact our established businesses. We urge you to protect our community's safety, health, and our livability by maintaining the current zoning in all of Hargrove and rejecting this and any other proposal to change to heavy industrial two. We all at Hargrove agree about the importance of the industry, so please don't take ours away. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes.
Good morning. My name's Gaylee Tullitson. I do not own Top Shelf Storage on the manager there at 6 Hargrove Lane. I am here representing the owners that also agree that rezoning to two in that area is just, I understand you're saying it's industrial. It's light industrial. It's always been light industrial. The businesses that are directly behind us, there's 150 employees out there. They have plans, I'm hoping in the future, that would bring more jobs to our area that would not require, and what scares me most, I walk my property every day. I back right up to Sunbelt Chemicals. As you heard, there was an episode yesterday. And I've been there for 17 years. There has been issues back there with Sunbelt. It's a scary place to be. If they did have a serious leak, we're all in serious trouble. If there is concrete dust that could possibly intermingle with that acid back there, are we, you know, I think some type of chemical survey should be done as well. It's not just traffic. I scare, I'm more scared for the chemicals that are there. I have three employees at our place, and then I have my customers. They store their vehicles with me. They're outside in the parking lot. Will they be affected? I'm another storage facility, I understand. I am in the industrial area, but there's a lot of competition out there. Are they going to come to me if they're going to have to drive down behind 17 cement trucks? I'm just a little concerned about what's happening with rezoning. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Dorine. I'm a 30-year business owner and resident here in Palm Coast. Before, it was Palm Coast City. I'm here just in support of being against rezoning in this area. There's so many small local businesses there in that community that will be affected, and I think you need to listen to each and every one of them and value their opinions about that because they have been there, and their livelihood matters. So that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Council members, thank you again for the opportunity to speak. My name's Keith Larrett, and I'm the owner of two units in the 68-industrial, 68-unit industrial condominium at 15 Hargrove Lane that we purchased about 10 years ago. We bought into this property because of its curb appeal, location, and the protections offered by its industrial one zoning. Since then, our complex has thrived. We've maintained an occupancy rate near 100% for the past decade. When a unit becomes available, it's rented or purchased quickly. That tells us something very important. The real need in this area isn't for heavier industrial use. It's for more high-quality, flexible spaces like ours, which support a wide range of small and mid-sized businesses. Now, let's step back and look at what this rezoning really means for the city of Palm Coast. First, some may try to spin this as creating more commercial real estate, but the land is already zoned light industrial, a category that creates jobs and supports small locally-owned businesses. By converting it to heavy industrial, we're not adding opportunity, we're removing it. We're shrinking the supply of light industrial land that has proven demand and trading it out for an out-of-state concrete company that will create, at best, 10 jobs for Palm Coast citizens. That's not growth, that's a loss. Second, on jobs. Right next door, at 15 Hargrove Lane, a 22-and-a-half-acre parcel supports 150 to 200 jobs, roughly seven jobs per acre. Applied to this 33-acre site, the potential is for over 230 jobs. Yet Palm Coast has been asked to settle for 10. That's a missed opportunity and a bad deal for our community. Third, safety. We already have two heavy industrial parcels in this year, in this area. One is home to Sunbelt Chemicals, which just yesterday had another spill that shut down Hargrove Grade, the second major incident in the last year. The last spill forced evacuations of nearby businesses. Adding another heavy industrial facility only increases risks for every business and every worker along Hargrove Grade and Hargrove Lane. Doing so without the addition of a hazmat infrastructure is irresponsible. Fourth, traffic and infrastructure. We've been told the traffic won't be that bad, but Hargrove Grade is already in disrepair and constantly needs maintenance. I agree with your motion about the traffic study. Thank you for that. This rezoning is not good for Palm Coast. It's citizens or the businesses that have already invested here and are providing jobs. The only winners are the parties involved in the land sale and the cement company. Finally, I'd like to say, how you vote on this matter is a reflection on who you represent. The overwhelming opposition to this rezoning shows clearly where Palm Coast citizens stand. A vote for this rezoning is essentially a vote against the residents and businesses you were elected to serve. I urge you to stand with your consistence.
Sir, your time's expired.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank Councilman Sullivan for bringing up the fact that you guys were about to move forward with this without at least a simple traffic survey. I'm sorry?
Can you announce your name?
Oh, sorry. My name is Mark Iman. I'm a local business owner in the Hargrove Industrial Complex there. It's a great place. Thank you for that. I would like to encourage the city to rethink the current motion. Frankly, I wouldn't trust a damn thing they give you as far as a traffic study. I think that is a legitimate expense of the city to conduct their own traffic surveys so that you people can do your due diligence as you're approving businesses to go back in that park. So I would, hopefully you'll reconsider that and conduct your own traffic survey. Secondly, as far as that industrial park, he mentioned that there are two parcels back there that are zoned for their proper industrial. I spent my entire life here. I'm almost 40 years old at this point. I grew up here. My parents moved here when I was about four years old, so it's all I've ever known. To put into perspective, those parcels that are zoned, that is Sunbelt Chemicals and American Ratonics, the cul-de-sac our businesses on when I was a teenager, that was a popular party and make-out spot because there was nothing there. So I say that to say that, yes, when those were zoned for heavy industrial, that was all swamp land and there was nothing there. Currently, there is, our business story is not to unlike anybody else in our complex. We started our company when I was in high school. My father and my mother and his brother, it was run out of our house and a small storage unit that we rented to have a business address. And we've grown to over 30 employees, and we occupy 4,000 square feet in that complex. Most people in there, similar story. They started their business in their house, and they've grown it. Most of us have outgrown that complex and we're looking for more land to move to. So it's, that place is an incredible community of people that are just realizing their American dream. I would also like to dovetail to what the lady spoke about, all the companies in there. If you go there, the prevailing wind tends to be a easterly wind through there, so it would be all of their dust and particulates would be blowing right into our complex. You have people that, they have detailed beautiful luxury vehicles to sell them and work on them. Nobody's going to bring their vehicle to them the first time they show up there and it's covered in concrete dust. I just, I think, and I don't understand the whole deed restriction to the permit because at that point, as far as I understand, you're still going to be rezoning them for industrial one, so you're still opening yourself up to the whole problem of you have rezoned this for industrial one, and everybody that owns property in that area should be approaching you at that point to rezone for heavy industrial to increase their property value. Because I can assure you, that's exactly what's going to happen. Their parcels will double in price if it gets re-zoned, and I think that's what you need to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name's Sean Johnson. I own Hollywood Structural Detailing in the industrial complex across the street that we're talking about. Everybody's talked about a bunch of the technical stuff. I did want to address a few things. One, a comment was made that there is no concrete currently dropped or spilled on Hargrove Grade. There is a large patch of it that's been there for many, many months, maybe even a year. A lot of motorcyclists come to work that way. That's creating a hazard for them. Also, Hargrove Grade does flood very heavily towards US-1. I can imagine what those heavy trucks running through that rainwater for a few weeks will do to that, costing the city even more money to repair that. Also, they said that their, part of the property would still be zoned, the original one. What's to say they don't make that a parking lot, which gets rid of the easement of the, of all the land that they're saying they're going to have trees there? They could very well make it a park lot and get rid of even more of that. But I would like to talk about community, and these people are my community. When Hargrove, when that complex opened up, many of us took money savings out of our own pocket and purchased those units because we saw something that was available to us. We couldn't afford or can't afford the real estate inside Palm Coast because it's mostly office space, which is much more than what we need. And so we bought into that. In the meantime, we had a developer who started that go belly up on us, leaving us with no money to pay for cameras, no money to pay for the electric bill to support the cameras, no money for the phone, no money for the insurance, no money for the roofs. And we banded together. Some of us got loans on our houses in other ways to pull money together to fight to keep that complex together over a decade ago. And since that, we've been able to put brand-new roofs on that out of our own pocket. We've been able to replenish those funds. We've been able to get the landscaping fixed and take care of it. And we have a thriving community. When I need my air conditions fixed, I walk to Arctic Breeze. I don't drive somewhere. I can walk to Mark's Arctic Breeze. I walk to Tony's Touch up front because he works in my car. I walk to Keith when he does floating shelves and things for me. I walk to his wife, Gwen, because she does my accounting and my bookkeeping. I walk a Breakers up front because they're the electric company that services me. We service one another. So when you come in here and you set up something like this, and these people are saying, we're going to leave, we're going to have to leave, we're going to have to move, you're breaking up a community. It'd be no difference if you took that plant and you put it in front of the very first agenda you had, which was that where you want to put the park in the stormwater there on the B section, and put that plant right in front of the B section. Those people are going to leave too. That's what these people are telling you. They're going to leave, and you're breaking up a community.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Again, my name is Mike Dahlbauer. I'm a resident of Palm Coast, been here for almost 20 years. I also work for a company on Hargrove and have just been... I also work for a company on Hargrove and have just been recently gotten my approval for my tax permit to open up a business there myself. Had I known what was going on, I might have made another choice. But what I hear here, and I don't know lots of the people that are there yet because I've only been there for a short period of time, but what I hear is about the community. And what I hear is what the responsibility of this council is, is not only to plan for the future, but to take care of those that are here now and have been here and have worked hard and have built their businesses. Because regardless of what you might say, this country has been built on entrepreneurs, on small businesses, family businesses that you see out there. And if we don't protect what we have in lieu of opening up to something we don't have, we're not doing the right thing. And it does open up that if we approve this change, that almost any business that we might not want can come in and say, "We're coming in." And then you have a battle that I don't think you're prepared to fight. So basically, what I'm saying is protect and be concerned about your current situation, your citizenry that are here. You've heard about businesses that want to grow and bring more employees in. What you're thinking about doing is going to curtail a lot of that. So I would urge you, once you take this period of time to research more on the traffic patterns and stuff like that, and I can tell you, and you can check with the Sheriff's Department, how many accidents happen at that location. There's been many. This will just increase it. But take the time. As a small business guy, I would tell the business that was coming in and say, "Well, we're not going to produce the dust. We're not going to produce that. We're not going to do that." I would say, "Okay, you're going to guarantee it? And with that guarantee, are you willing to put a million, million-two into a special account? So if you say what doesn't happen, happens, there'll be money there to take care of the people that are concerned about what might happen?" I don't think you're going to do that. I don't think they would agree to do that. So think about who your citizens are now as much as you think about what might be in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
What to add after all that? That's a lot of trips, 150 trucks per day.
Ma'am, can you announce your name?
Shanta Pruninger. You have the trucks that come that bring this event and you have those that exit with the mix. And it's still a lot of trips. So that means that will affect the roads. Even that road that goes to their project is not suitable for that. It's a small road. The water is one big concern to me because if it takes 10,000 gallons a day or 14,000 gallons a day, so it's between 200,000 and 280,000 per month. Okay, so they say we're going to have our own well. That's nice, but that well could be used for the resident instead of using recycled water, that is the project to come. Why use that water that could be precious for the people? And the rainy season, we have it only one time in a year. It's not like the rain is coming all year long. Teresa, you had it right on target. Your conscience says it's not right to do it, but are you going to vote for it anyway? And I'm asking you, so far, have you had any support from the people, from the resident who is with you in that project? I would urge you to vote against that change of zoning. And it's not because you can do it that you have to do it. We ask you that you defend the citizen. And that's us, that's those who live in the city, that's those who have a business around. And it's for the community and the generation to come. So I hope you hear all those people in the room today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's John Santos. I'm the owner of Major Auto Repair. I'm 31 years old, recently married, and God bless me with a child and another one on the way now. I get up every day at 6:00 AM to go to work. And, you know, Hargrove is already busy as it is. It's crazy to even approve this. A concrete truck weighs 67,000 pounds when it's loaded. If it's traveling at 30 miles an hour, which is the speed for that road there, it will use about 150 to 200 feet to make a complete stop. It's, that vehicle to turn left on US-1, it's already hard for the average car to make a left turn there when there's such high traffic going back and forth. With that being said, if an accident happens there, what happens to our clients coming in? What happens because there's no other exit coming out of that road? What happens if there's a spill? You know, what happens if one of those trucks roll over turning left or, you know, accidents happen? I used to work in construction and I can tell you, there's nothing clean about concrete, nothing. So you can, if you don't want to go to a concrete plant, go to a job site. Go see a concrete truck leaving. The amount of stuff that falls out of it. So what happens with the small businesses, you know, that cars are coming in and out of the business, you know, high-end vehicles that we get sometimes, they're not going to come there anymore, you know? So, and then if the vehicle gets damaged, I'm sure if it was your vehicle, you would show up to the business and be like, "What can you help me with?" And then who's going to stand up for us? You guys say that you want the best for the city and for the residents. This, like, this whole plan is insane. It's crazy to even think about this. There's only, that road, it's too small for all this traffic that's coming. They're saying one truck per, every six minutes, that's now. What happens when they start to expand? And then what happens if you guys actually pass this to Zone 2? What's also going to come into there? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good morning. I think it's still morning. I'm Steve Parish. I'm from 15 Hargrove Lane, Unit 1A. I'm on the board of the association there, so thank you all for being there. I know what that's like to, I have 54 people, you have 4,000, or 10,000, or 100,000, actually. Safety through smart growth. We know the city's trying to build the commercial. We know it's a 70/30 is what you're looking for. We've always known that. But what we have over here is a perfect model of growth for the city. That 36 acres for one plant that's out of state, which brings its profit out of state, which is going to employ 18 people, probably 10 of which from their other sites. That's wonderful, but then they're going to take their profits back to Tennessee. It was supposed to be another flex space like what we have over there. And we are a perfect model. We have all these businesses. You've heard from all 54 of the owners today. We employ 150 people. Out on Hargrove, there are another 100 businesses, which employ another 200 to 300 people out there. So we're thinking of the money and all the infrastructure. When they started Palm Coast, the plant on Roberts Road, the roadways around there were all 12-inch-thick concrete with reinforced rebar. There's a gentleman out here that had to dig down into that and could not believe that. Where Hargrove Grade and Lane are about six inches of a soil cement, which is Kokaina and cement, with some blacktop on it. So what is it going to cost the city and the taxpayers to repave Hargrove Grade from US-1 all the way down to the end of the cul-de-sac? Plus, there is the culvert that Brett mentioned. Will that handle all the weight? When they close the road to fix it, how long are we going to be out of business while that's happening? Everyone has said everything and I don't want to just keep regoing over everything. It's all in here. But the infrastructure should be in place first. Putting all the industrial 2, yes, we were shut down again on Hargrove because of the chemical spill. Ambulance has left. Six months ago, we were shut down for half a day as the plume of muriatic acid was just hanging over our buildings. 10 years ago, they had a derailment. So adding more industrial 2 to that area with no egress for us is not a good thing. I know the DOT has the line over there, so if you do pass this, I would hope you would add that road that goes out to Palm Coast Parkway and make it wide enough and big enough for this company to access.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm Matt Bassaraba. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I urge you to support the rezoning request for the concrete batch plant. Concrete is the backbone of our local infrastructure, roads, hospitals, schools, and all that depend on it. By allowing this facility, we reduce the cost and environmental impact of transporting the concrete from further away. The mayor mentioned it earlier. The closest other plant is in Banell. That's seven miles south of this location. That's 14 miles every single trip, less impact on US-1. That's a substantial decrease to all the new construction that's going to be going north of the property. Secondly, there is no competition. The market is high for concrete. Shells are a major portion of the cost of construction and they really impact the affordability. So by allowing this, it would decrease the cost of new homes and new construction. And secondly, this type of infrastructure only helps small businesses, more residents. When this new construction happens, it supports local businesses, HVACs, contractors, plumbers, et cetera, that are all in this. Hargrove Grade will only be helped out by further jobs and more clients to potentially service. So that's my thoughts on it and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Amanda Fernandez with Flagler Habitat. We've always had, or recently have had, to restore at 5 Hargrove Grade and moved our offices from in Banell down there. And just being in a store every day and watching our customers come in and out, I don't even know if our neighbors know this, but probably 30% of our foot traffic is just from their clients walking over. And obviously, that's how we run as a nonprofit. People buy these donated products and we're able to help with affordable housing, which we know is an issue in this area. Land's going up. We're struggling to even get land to build for new homeowners. So if this plant goes in and our lovely neighbors leave, where does that leave us? So I just came in support of them and for our business. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Carol Stoughton, Palm Coast, Florida. I don't know if you people realize it, but when there is a terrible accident on 95, it's routed to Route 1. Did you ever get stuck on Route 1 when there was a shutdown of 95? And picture a cement truck there, not able to go anywhere and they have an hour's time to get wherever they're going. And if they're coming over to Palm Coast, down Palm Coast Parkway, to where McDonald's is and the gas station, and you want to make a right and go down Belter, you can get stuck there with three lights and four lights. Did you ever see a fire truck try to get through or an ambulance get through? They have to go through the gas station. Well, now there's cement trucks there and nobody can go anywhere. The roads can't take the traffic of all these cement trucks. And also, these people probably live in town. Some of them rent, they pay taxes. They pay taxes at Hargrove. Can you imagine if all of a sudden all of them said, "We're out of here"? They're going to give everything up. It's a tax base and you're losing it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further public comments? I'll bring it back to the dice. Any follow-ups?
I have a couple of questions for legal, actually. Marcus, when we look at what we are able to consider today, assuming we can consider public comment from the business owners to the same degree we can consider the comments of the applicant, can we give those equal fact weighing consideration?
If you, my mic's on, right? Okay, there we go. Yeah, if you think that those are facts and not opinions, you can rely on them. That is correct.
Okay. And as to staff, have we looked at weight, capacity limitations, et cetera, for that culvert that was mentioned a few times?
So if I heard correctly, they said, or someone from the public participation mentioned a concrete truck may be approximately 67,000 pounds when fully loaded. I know for a fact that our largest fire apparatus that we have in the city weighs 75,000 pounds. So our roads are designed to be able to support our largest fire apparatus.
Okay, but not to the, obviously not with the same, yeah, intensity and repetitiveness that we'd be looking at at Hargrove, but I'm also thinking about that culvert in particular. So have we, I guess my question is, and if the answer is no, that's fine, but have we done an actual analysis of what that impact and that intensity and that use would be on that specific culvert and that specific road?
I would have to defer to our traffic engineer and senior transportation planner on that. I'm unaware personally of any particular study on that culvert currently.
Okay. And then, Marcus, if we, because my motion is pending right now, but if we were to do a rezoning to industrial 2 with the deed restrictions, you know, we obviously are not going to be in these seats inevitably. So when future council are looking at other zoning requests, I'm assuming they can only consider the actual zoning, not the fact that there could be some deed restrictions, correct? Because when you're looking at a zoning map, you only see industrial 2.
Yeah, that's correct. This is just be a fact-specific scenario that you guys are doing with your agreement to approve it.
Okay. You know, based on what we appear as fact-finders can consider, knowing that there's a bakery on Hargrove, which I forgot about, and I'm sorry that I forgot about the bakery, you can actually see it when you're driving down. It's right there on the left on the street side. The hospital, the medical, the detailing, the tenting. I do just think that this, even with the deed restriction, I just find this to be incompatible. I want to withdraw my motion to prolong this and see if the deed restriction is possible. So I'm withdrawing my motion.
Someone withdrawn a second? That was Mr. Miller?
Yes. I'll withdraw.
Okay. So we're back to square one. Can we make up, does someone make a motion?
I make a motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny. Second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
I, Mr. Mayor. Well, first and foremost, I want to thank the business owners for their time to meet me on very short notice based on my schedule. And I did indeed vote yes on this ordinance for first read, but after sitting down and speaking with you, and for me, you know, as we look at facts, the facts, the numbers that you, and you guys showed me your plans, the numbers of, you know, jobs you're going to create as you expand, to me dwarfs what is being presented. Now, is it the same pay rate as, you know, what SRN might propose? I don't know, but it doesn't matter. I'm looking at the total number of jobs to our communities and the total numbers of supporting the businesses that we have here, setting aside all the other, you know, potential environmental conditions. So the facts of the job numbers are night and day. And so I will be supporting this motion to do away with this ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion from the dice?
Just really quickly, Mayor, from a criteria perspective, there was a comment, and I remember the last, at the last hearing as well, a gentleman who said that he rents space and every time one space opens up, it's filled immediately. I think that that goes directly to the criteria that we have to consider, which is whether or not this is contrary to the public interest and whether or not it will affect the economics and the businesses in that area. I think that, you know, from a legal perspective, those are the things that we need to rely on. So I do find that from a factual standpoint, that this would have a negative impact, knowing that there's a demand for exactly what you folks are utilizing and what that current park is supposed to be promoting. folks are utilizing and what that current park is supposed to be promoting.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just depending on how this vote goes, I still think there should be a traffic study done on Hargrove.
Yeah.
Because it will affect future, future. If we have that done, we don't have it now.
Yeah.
And just, so I would like to say that, maybe a special motion on that or something, but it can be done fairly simply by, within, within-house. It's a traffic counter, basically, putting out there for, for a time period. And I just think we, we need that for future reference.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Restate the motion?
The motion is to deny the proposed ordinance.
The motion is to deny, and we have a second. We're going to open it up for public comment, but we're moving to deny. Any public comment? Anyone for public comment? See, no one come forward. I'll bring it back to the dice. Any other comments?
I just wanted to add that, you know, on first read, I voted no, and I haven't seen anything necessarily to change my decision on that. So, you know, my inclination is to, to support this denial.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion?
I'm just going to restate it. So this council is, the motion is to deny ordinance 2025, 11 Hargrove Lane zoning map amendment, application 6253.
Yes, sir. Correct. Call the vote, Ms. Cook.
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Member Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We're moving on to item I.
Mr. Mayor, I do support Councilman Sullivan's request to, to move forward with a, with a study for-
Traffic impact-
Hold up, Mr. Hanson.
Study, yeah.
A traffic impact study, and, yeah, if we, I think, if we-
That'll be administrative, it'll be-
Yeah.
I just want to make your sense.
Yeah, my consensus, yeah.
Yes, correct.
Okay, we'll get with city manager and get that worked out.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. We're moving on to I, ordinance at the first read, I-5. City Attorney?
I'm going to just pause until the crowd leaves. That's okay.
As a matter of fact, you guys want to take a quick break?
We can. I can use the restroom.
We're going to, we're going to adjourn for 10 minutes.
I, I don't think so, but I'm going to go ask, um, yeah, let me, because I'm, we're going to be here to refer you. I told her yesterday-
I mean, the good thing is that the one presentation I think covers like five.
But that, the, the status of all of our road projects is going to be a while. I think, yeah, let me get my-
Yeah.
I just wanted to know how you guys kind of got, what, and then-
Accident. For me specifically, I was-
Oh, I'm in.
I, I, I don't know. A bunch of people asked me because they felt like there wasn't any big candidates for my district. I filed last of any person in the entire county for last year's election. So I was kind of like very late to them. Like, there's some people that are from next year's elections, and they were like, they show up like-
No.
Well, considering that we get paid about $24,000 a year to do this job.
Four taxes.
Four taxes. We all mostly have other jobs. So, but I work as a-
I asked how you got involved in it.
A tech.
Gotcha.
I, I work as a project manager for a tech. We do large-scale, like, project for 450 people.